All right, welcome everyone. I call to order the Beaverton School Board Business Meeting for January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two. We'll start with a roll call of board members. Board members answer present when I call your name. Susan Greenberg.
Present.
Karen Perez.
Presente.
Eric Simpson.
Present.
Sunita Garg.
Present.
Ugana Enenaya.
Present.
Becky Timchuck.
Yeah.
Tom Colette, I'm present, so everybody is here. I want to begin with a land acknowledgement. I would like to acknowledge that our district rests on the traditional land of the Tuautin Kalapuya. We thank the ancestors of the Kalapuya for being the original stewards and protectors of these lands. We are honored by the collective work of many indigenous nations, leaders, and families who demonstrate resilience, resistance, revitalization, healing, and creativity. Do board members have any changes they'd like to make to the agenda tonight? Ugana, any changes?
No, thank you.
Okay, great. Then we will start off with our recognitions, and I think Sunita has her first recognition tonight.
Tonight, the district recognizes the following individuals for their outstanding achievement and contributions to the Beaverton School District and the community. Niveda, Sahana, and Anusha. Would you please make your way to the presenter's table at the front of the room? Congratulations to Niveda Satish Kumar from Stoller Middle School, Sahana Mutaya from Sunset High School, and Anusha Jayaram from Tumwater Middle School, who won Oregon's first district congressional app challenge. With their phone application called Bike Better, Bike Better shows where crashes have occurred on city streets where cyclists should exercise extra caution. Please tell us more about how you came up with the idea and how your app works.
Hi, I'm Sahana.
Hi, I'm Anusha. Should we start that over? Okay. Hi, I'm Nivi, and I'm an eighth grader at Stoller Middle School.
Hi, I'm Anusha, and I'm an eighth grader at Tumwater Middle School.
Hi, I'm Sahana, and I'm a ninth grader at Sunset High School.
Oh, thank you. And we're Team Young Minds.
So we created an app called Bike Better using ODOT crash data to raise awareness of unsafe crash zones so that bikers can choose alternate paths. More than one thousand people die each year, and over one hundred and thirty thousand people are injured just due to biking accidents. Our app highlights past crash zones to raise awareness and reduce crashes.
With the help from the Oregon Department of Transportation, also known as ODOT, we got bicycle crash data that occurred in the past fifteen years from the Beaverton, Portland, and Hillsborough areas. Using these lat long points, we layered a heat map on top of the Google Maps that showed the crash zones.
So when the user first opens the app, the app will ask the user access to access their current location. The more precise the user allows the app to access their current location, the more optimal our app can function. So once access to the location is granted, our app will show the user's current location along with all nearby past crash zones layered on top of it as a heat map. If a user wants to plan their biking route, all they need to do is click the bike icon on the top right corner and enter their destination. Using the Google Maps Directions API, our app will plot the route on Google Maps along with all nearby crash zones.
Bike Better helps create awareness for bikers about the risks of bicycle crashes, and they can be more cautious of where they're going.
Our app was written in the language Kotlin using the Android Developer Studio IDE, and it is available for download on the Google Play Store.
We strive towards the greater Portland area being a city free of any type of crashes through creating biker safer, through creating safer bike routes.
So as you know, we submitted our app to a congressional app challenge, and we won first place in our congressional district. We we are so grateful for this opportunity to present in front of you. We would also like to thank the Beaverton School District for inspiring us to continue further in STEM, and we would also like to give a special shout out to ODOT for giving us all of our data, and thank you for listening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And our next award is for Mr. Agar. If you'd please make your way to the presenter's table at the front of the room. Tonight, we also want to recognize Jared Agar, art teacher at Beaverton Academy of Science and Engineering Base, who was selected as the Clay's Nobel Educator of Distinction by the National Society of High School Scholars, the NSHSS. Jared was nominated by a student for outstanding dedication and commitment to excellence in the profession. Each year, students in NSHSS are invited to nominate the educator who has made the most significant contribution to their academic career for the Clay's Nobel Educator of Distinction Award. This honor recognizes exemplary educators whose passion and devotion inspire their students to grow and develop as scholars, leaders, and citizens. Congratulations, Jared. What an exceptional honor. Would you like to say a few words about your award?
Oh, sure, I'll say something real quick. So I just would like to say thanks to the Beaverton School District and to the Beaverton Education Foundation. I work at the Beaverton Academy of Science and Engineering as school for students who, am I doing it right? Oh, I'm turning it on. Oh, that's better, huh? Anyway, I work at the Beaverton Academy of Science and Engineering, a school that's predominantly for students who are interested in science and being able to teach art. And film there has been a wonderful experience, and seeing that program grow despite the fact that it's a school that's focused on science, it shows that the district and our school have a real desire to continue to create and cultivate creative minds, and I'm grateful to be a part of that work. So thanks so much.
I believe Dr. Baldairis has our next recognition.
I do, and I really want to appreciate our school board. This is School Board Recognition Month here in Oregon, but also nationwide, and really want to thank our board for your commitment to our kids. Our almost forty thousand kids, our two hundred and eighty-five thousand people, that residents that make up the Beaverton School District, and our over four thousand employees. I think it's the countless hours and dedication that you spent on these positions that are volunteer. They come, your dedication, I've worked for several boards, your dedication is really pretty remarkable, pretty remarkable, working for our community and the involvement. And people who don't know what the board does, they're involved in a lot of other committees, subcommittees that they that they work through this past year. Bond and levy, bond and levy successfully passed here in the Beaverton School System, and with, you know, I think our levy was over seventy percent, over seventy percent, pretty phenomenal. And working through a very difficult time these past few years with the pandemic, as we're seeing us come out of that and looking at the direction we have now. So again, just with great appreciation to every one of you for your dedication to your community and to our kids and to our, again, our staff. So thank you so much. I know there's some goodies in the back that you'll pick up, but just really want to thank the school board for your commitment to the Beaverton School District. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Baldairis. The kind words are appreciated, and I'm going to hand it back to you for the superintendent report.
And I'll be quick. I know that, again, just talked about the school board recognition. I've been busy meeting with elected officials. I know that the long session starts, and people are in Salem today. I've been meeting with local officials, really answer questions they may have about the local district, our local district, and also just the educational trends that we're that we're working through. I know we have decline enrollment in our school district, and our priority, I know, is to ensure that we're fully funded, to ensure that we're doing what's best for our kids, especially now, as I stated earlier, coming off the pandemic, is making sure we have the academic support for our students that are so much needed, especially after these two and a half years that no one asked to be in, and as well as the social emotional support for our kiddos. But not just our kiddos, for our staff as well. I think one of the things that we need to always keep in mind is the faculty that are in front of kids, making sure that we take care of them also, but also just ensuring that we get support for our kids coming back, because attendance has been an issue in Oregon and nationwide, making sure that we're staying focused on that. Working on our strategic plan, I know the board's going to be coming back here pretty soon to meet with staff to talk about strategic planning, with the goal of having this strategic plan fully adopted by the board this spring. And one of the things that we're really working towards also is our dual, our multilingual expansion program, trying to expand languages across our community. I know that our multilingual department's busy at that, and the board will be getting more information regarding what that could look like in the future, but really excited about, again, our multilingual expansion. And just to, for the community, we have over a hundred languages that are spoken in Beaverton. Fifty-seven percent of our kids are kids from diverse backgrounds. So fifty-seven percent of the kids come from diverse backgrounds, and it's becoming more and more diverse every year. So making sure we're meeting the kids' needs for full engagement, but also, you know, the work needs for the future, because again, most countries are multilingual, speak multiple languages, and look forward to the opportunity to expand those out, as well as beginning our budget process. I know that we start this week with our administrative staff with Mr. Schofield, and we're going to continue to work with our board and our community regarding kind of what expenditures and where we need to be budget-wise, but also in the future, look forward to that alignment being tightly aligned to our strategic plan. So that's something that our board will have you guys fully weigh in on that in terms of what your vision is, so look forward to that. And also been really busy visiting classrooms, which is the best part of my job, is being able to go into the schools, but also to activities, you know, from band activities, choir activities, but also to just sporting events, which is kind of fun to watch our kids perform. And it's something we're urging any board member that you're wanting to come with me to classrooms, I know some of you do, is, you know, as well as I do, it's the best part, when you walk in and see great teachers teach and teach and kids learn. So look forward to more opportunities this spring. So thank you, board, and look forward to a great meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Baldairis. Next up, we have comments from our employee groups. Lindsay Ray from the Beaverton Education Association.
Hello, is it on? It's on, hooray. Good evening, Superintendent Baldairis, Dr., sorry, Board Chair Colette, and members of the school board. For the record, my name is Lindsay Ray, and I'm a high school math teacher currently serving as the president of the Beaverton Education Association. As Dr. Baldairis mentioned, the two thousand and twenty-three Oregon legislative session began today in Salem, and as our lawmakers come together, one of the things that is at the top of my mind is the budget. Specifically, you will be surprised to know, the state school fund. Without getting into too much detail, which is hard because I'm a teacher, I'd like to remind folks that since nineteen ninety-nine, the Oregon Department of Education has published a report called the Quality Education Model, or QEM. This report uses an evidenced-based approach to determine the amount of funding required to run a system of highly effective schools. Since the inception of the QEM back in nineteen ninety-nine, the Oregon Legislature has never funded schools to the recommended level, routinely providing twenty to thirty percent less than those levels. Not only that, the legislature has only provided adequate funding for schools to continue their current level of service, not even the QEM, just their current level of service, during only four of the last twenty-three years. With the help of the Student Success Act and one-time funds from the state and federal government, we have seen what increased resources can provide. I have spoken to y'all many times before about the continued struggles with mental health amongst students and staff, the increased needs of our students after the collective trauma of the past few years, and the unsustainable requirements of educators, especially our special educators. We know that with increased resources, we can work toward lower class sizes, more staff to help address students' varying needs, more opportunities for students to thrive, and just realizing the schools that our students deserve. I hope that BEA and BSD and OSEA can work in partnership to ensure that our schools are being funded at a level that will ensure students have access to a rigorous, fulfilling, and joyful education, and that educators have the resources that they need to provide the best possible school experience for all students. I want to encourage anyone listening, all these folks in the back, to find out who your Oregon state senators and representatives are. You can do that at oregonlegislature.gov, and let them know about the importance of funding schools. Our communities and our students deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you, President Ray. And next up, we have Kirsty Sakman from the Oregon School Employees Association.
Hello. Good evening. Good evening, Dr. Baldairis, Chair Colette, and members of the school board. I am Kirsty Sakman. I am currently an elementary special education para educator, as well as the current OSEA classified president. We are in the seventy-something day of the school year, which seems like not very far into the year, but I promise you, any of us that have been working here know that we are very much in the middle of our school year. We, as an association, always want to take a moment and say thank you to all of our classified staff for the continued efforts and work mirroring what our partners in BEA have said. It's been a long few years, and as an OSEA representation, we know that our classified staff have been on the ground floor, being flexible as ever, and this school year is no different, even with us being back in a more, quote-unquote, typical year. We are excited to say that we have seen a rise in hiring and the retention of our classified staff, and we have no doubt to recognize all of the due diligence and efforts of our BSD management in our hiring days, our staffing increase, and the idea of opening up more days to open to new hires and opening the door to many new staff. And we are very thankful for that work. Something as a board we would really like to say that we appreciate is, this last Friday, January thirteenth, we had a professional development day for all certified staff, but this year, as classified staff, we were able to participate in that as well. We know that there was a lot of struggle and stress around the classified working day because it was something new for us as classified staff. We, many of our staff less than two-twelve in classified don't work on non-student days very often, and we know that the district put in tireless and effortless work to provide professional development and time in our buildings and at our work sites to be able to grow as staff, as both individuals and as a community, and we very much appreciate that. I've heard a lot this over, over this weekend from staff that they really appreciate the ti, extra time in their buildings, as well as a chance to participate in group events, and many PD options and learning as a community whole, and we very much appreciate the growth as we, as Beaverton, grow together. We also, as classified staff, have recently, over the winter break, released our new calendars for the upcoming years. We have definitely heard mixed reviews from our staff, and we understand that the changes are always, always hard and challenging. Something new, a new calendar, a new schedule, especially as a student that went through Beaverton School District and now an employee, there's been a routine of what days off we have, what time schedules look like, when the last day of school is, and this new calendar makes changes, and that's hard. But we, as OSEA, are very thankful that the BSD management, our partners in BEA, and everyone involved invited us to the table in this conversation that we had a voice for what we think would advocate for most of our staff, as well as our students, families, and our community. We know that it's different, it's hard, this first year in the new calendar will be difficult, but in the following years, that we hope this new practice and the ideas and the effort we put into it will matter and will be seen, and will show that we care for our staff right alongside our families. And we are very thankful that BSD invited us to the table for that conversation. We also want to say thank you. We have had several MOUs to our contract. I think we're up to three new ones in the last two months, and all of them have been in representation of our classified staff and supporting them in their different roles. We, as OSEA, like to keep everyone in the idea of inclusivity, as well as being one, but we all know that every different role, every different department holds a different, very important role in our district, and so we've been able with BSD management to meet a medium ground to represent different departments and how they support our students and families, and we feel that we have found a great balance, and we really appreciate the time to find this balance. We, as OSEA, are always finding strength in our communications and our time at our ta, at the table to collectively communicate and express our needs for classified staff in support of our families, our students, and our district. We are thankful for our partnership, and we appreciate everything that everyone does for us as classified staff, and we feel we've had a bigger voice at the table in the last few years despite the hardships of pandemic, and we are very thankful for that, and we are excited for the continued work we will do. Thank you.
Thank you, President Sakman. Next up, we have time for community comments. I want to first start by noting that we received three written public comments. Board members, appreciate your comments and thank each and every one of you for taking the time to share your thoughts with us. Thank you for attending the school board meeting with us today. We are truly grateful for your presence and the opportunity to receive your input. One of our district's greatest strengths is its community involvement. As we know, your involvement comes from a place of caring for our students, families, community, and staff. Please note that board members do not respond directly to testimony, but we are paying close attention to your comments. We know it can be difficult to testify in public, but we are sincerely interested in hearing your comments and concerns. We ask that all present model respectful behavior to provide an open space in which a variety of viewpoints and perspectives can be shared. A few guidelines. Our comments do not allow for the specific naming of school personnel. Personnel matters should be dealt with either through the complaint process or by contacting the principal or central office staff person. If a school personnel is named during a comment period, I will stop your comments and ask you to refrain from naming the person. If it occurs a second time, you will be asked to end your comments. Commenters are allowed to comment on any subject. The previous restriction on commenting only on agenda items before the board has been removed. Everyone has two minutes to provide testimony to the board. A timer will be set and will go off at the two-minute mark. If you continue talking beyond the two minutes, I will ask you to end your comments. To ensure fair treatment for all commenters, this will be enforced uniformly regardless of the subject matter, point of view, or whether you have finished your prepared comments. I understand it can be difficult to provide comments within this shortened time period, and recommend that any comments you did not have time to provide orally be sent to the board in an email or paper form. Please do not speak or interrupt the meeting outside of the two-minute period provided for your testimony. If this occurs, you'll be asked to leave or remove from the meeting. Thanks again for joining us tonight. We look forward to hearing your comments. And we're going to start tonight with, two folks are joining us virtually. Hyun Soon Lee, I believe, is joining us virtually. Let me know when you're ready to start, and I'll get the timer running, and we're looking forward to hearing your comments.
That's great. Can everyone hear me well? Awesome, that's great. Hello, I'm a junior at Westview High School, and I'm interested in advocacy and actually helped out passing the levy last November as well. About two months ago, our Westview High School was put into lockdown after a call regarding an active threat inside the school. And as a student at Westview, we had to turn off the lights and everything, and let me tell you, the atmosphere was pretty scary. Therefore, I asked the superintendent and the rest of the board to consider banning concealed weapons in Beaverton schools. Let me explain. In two thousand and twenty-one, Oregon Senate Bill five hundred and fifty-four let public school districts opt out to close exemptions that allow holders of concealed handgun license to carry weapons onto schools. To quote an OPB article, Oregon lawmakers last year gave every public school district in Oregon the option to ban guns from their premises. And yes, this brought change. The Lake Oswego District have already implemented concealed, this policy. Salem, Tillamook, Woodburn, Pendleton, they have already implemented this policy. And I just want a policy that bans third-party community members to walk into a school legally in Beaverton. With this policy implemented, we can discourage any thoughts of gun violence inside schools. Please imagine if you're one of the students and your school is in lockdown. Dr. Baldairis and the board, please, please make note of Oregon Senate Bill five-five-four and ban CHL holders from possession of guns in schools. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, next we have Kayla McCarley. Kayla, are you with us?
I'm here.
Great. Let me know when you're ready to start, and we'll get the timer running.
I'm ready. Good evening, all, and thank you for allowing me to share today. My name is Kayla. I am a social-emotional learning educator for the Beaverton School District. I work for the Behavioral Health and Wellness, or BHNW, department, and collaborate with all of the student success coaches and school support specialist coaches. I'm here to highlight the work of both BHNW teams and the coaches and urge the school board and community at large to continue investing in such vital and desperately needed supports for staff and students. BHNW teams are a wild dream of multidisciplinary folks coming together to serve the whole child. Teams include, at minimum, schools, school counselors, social workers, administrators, and coaches. Additionally, school psychs, special education teachers, classified staff, and specialists also comprise some BHNW teams. Since just the beginning of the school year, BHNW teams have served over thirty-eight-hundred students in BSD. Counselors have served one thousand three hundred and eleven students, social workers have served seven hundred and seventy-two students, and coaches have served five hundred and fifty-nine students. These numbers barely reflect the incredible role these folks play in their communities. More impressive, those numbers undercut the reality of how many people they actually support. The only reason our teams are able to serve and support so many is because of Beaverton's investment in adequate staffing and resources related to BHNW. When planning funding and staff allocations for the two thousand and twenty-three school year, I encourage you to consider the continued investment in BHNW teams, and specifically student success coaches and school support specialist coaches, holding the difficult truth that the impact of a world that doesn't value our emotions, calls for justice, or spirits over our productivity is hurting us all. That being said, all community members can and do significantly benefit from the services these teams provide. I see this as an exciting and transformational opportunity for the BSD I see this as an exciting and transformational opportunity for the BSD to practice what is preached, uphold the WE pillars, and invest in the wellness of our people. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments, Carley. Next up, we have in-person comments. Erin Herrick. Erin, are you present?
Is this on already? Okay. Good evening, board members. My name is Erin Herrick, and I've spoken a few times about the lack of transparency in this school district, and tonight is no different. Tonight's lack of transparency relates to one of the board's key jobs, which are adopting curriculums for our district. My friend and Lewis and Clark professor, Dr. Lyle Asher, stated it best. "The best program devised for school districts is a coherent, knowledge-based curriculum that gives less advantaged children the knowledge and the tools that their more advantaged peers pick up at home." Unfortunately, BSD doesn't fall into this category. Proof is in the statistics, and the sta- stats show that Beaverton had a 10-point drop in their ELA pass rates and Oregon's NAEP rating at below basic, which is defined as performance as failing to even partially master fundamental grade-loving level reading and math knowledge. Carefully reviewing curriculum materials and following legal processes of utter importance to our children's academic success. This clearly didn't happen when the board adopted the reading curriculum in 2015, 2016, and now we are left with the reward of being one of the worst states with declines in reading. To remind everyone, the board adopted a whole language curriculum based on three-Q method versus phonics. The creator of the whole language curriculum, Lucy Calkins, in Postcards from a Journey in 2020, even had to admit, "It is clear that phonics awareness, the ability to identify and manipulate the sounds of spoken language, is a foundational component of reading success." I read recently in the Oregonian that the BSD has committed to letters training, which is phonics-based for its teachers. I'd like to request that the board release to the community what is included in the tr- teacher training and collect data that connects student growth to this teacher preparation program. Based on the board's abysmal track record of adopting curriculum and this most recent rush to end incomplete approval of the K-5 social sciences curriculum, I'd like to re- remind you of your commitment to complete a thorough review that includes multiple options to be transparent and include community members-
Erin, I'm sorry, Erin, but you've-
Follow the legal process.
You've reached your two minutes. If you have additional comments, please email them to us. We'd be interested in that.
Okay, thank you.
Next up, we have John Gregory.
My name is John Gregory. I was a tech specialist for Beaverton School District for four years. In my time with the district, I worked with the IT department to provide tech support for staff and students at the Arts and Communications Magnet Academy. I built good relationships with every single one of my coworkers and many students at my school. Before 2020, my experience at the school district was mostly positive because I was unaware of the ways that employees were being abused. In 2020, I watched as Kate Brown issued unconstitutional mandates to the people of Oregon. This school district enforced those mandates onto their staff. The superintendent and human resources department sent out emails to all staff pressuring us to comply with the mandate or be fired. Most people who didn't want to get the shot either got it out of losing their job or they applied for religious, religious exemptions, which was a letter justifying why they objected to taking the shot on religious grounds. Beaverton School Dist- actually, uh, the district actually converse, coerced people to explain their religious reasons for why they opposed injecting something into their body. These feared to manipulate their own staff. If these shots actually worked, then vaccinated people wouldn't get sick from COVID, but vaccinated people are repeatedly catching and spreading COVID. So the vaccine was a lie. Even if the masking, even the masking policy was toxic, I developed a sinus infection on two separate occasions because of your mask policy. When I didn't wear a mask, I would remain healthy, but when I wore a mask for long periods of time, I would get sick. I'm here now because I would not comply with this nonsensical mandate, and I was fired by the district and other good teachers and staff were for, for the same reason. Thank God none of us could see the, uh, some of us, thank God, some of us could see the glaring problems going on in this school district and said, "No." I urge parents to pull your kids from this public school system and pursue private or homeschool alternatives. And if you're a district employee who's been silently tolerating the abuse all this time, I urge you to stop subjecting yourself to the torment. The more you subordinate yourself to your oppressors, the more you chip away at your own soul. I do want to thank you all. You showed your true colors these last few years and we're not ungrateful.
John, we're two minutes. Thank you.
Can you hear me? Hello, my name is Albert Fazrif. I have three children going to Beaverton School District. And recently, it came to my knowledge that the board, in, in June, the board adopted the standards with edic studies before the curriculum for those studies had been actually created and reviewed by anyone. This gives an opportunity for people who are creating this curriculum to put whatever they want in it, and they actually do. So my son goes to the fourth grade, uh, of the Saxon Mountain Elementary School, and these are the materials that he received in his, uh, social science class. One, uh, some materials are asking him, asking him and his classmates to become woke and social justice activists. This material, this, this number of materials are teaching children, instead of treating everyone as individuals on the wide range of spectrums of personalities, to teach them as, uh, to look at them as either advantaged or disadvantaged, oppressors or oppressed, bad or good, victims or supremacists. These type of materials, this is actually the questionnaire, and my children, my son and his classmates were asked for their citizenship status, social class, religion, and sexual orientation. Nine and 10-year-old children were asked for their preferences during sexual intercourse. That's what sexual orientation means, whether they prefer to have sex with same-sex partners, opposite-sex partners, or both. Nine and 10-year-old children were asked this question, and this, this, this was asked in the school. My question to the board and request to the board, please check who were those people who reviewed this curriculum and approved it before it wa- it was sent to the school. Thank you.
Next, next up, we have Ingrid.
Good evening. Good evening to the members of the school board and Superintendent Balduris. I'm really nervous, so I'll do, do my best. Uh, my name is Ingrid Arnett. Um, I'm really just here to thank you for all that you do for my kids and the kids and all the kids in the Beaverton School District. My children attend Whitford and Mountainside. I actually attended Cooper Mountain and Mountain View in Aloha. Um, so I want you to know that I'm really glad that I grew up here and I got to be educated in this district and that my children have that opportunity also. I'm speaking on behalf of Beaverton Friends of Music tonight. It's, it's benefiting families like mine all throughout the district, the work that you've done together. I hear positive stories from other parents and students, thanks to my association with Beaverton Friends of Music. The CME is making a difference for kids. I want to tell you about my son's experience. If you asked him, he would tell you that he likes the CME because he gets to see all of his teachers every day. As his mom, I want him to get the best foundation possible, and consistency is the best way to learn. We're both glad that he gets to have a PE plus-two elective's schedule every day. Thank you for making that possible for all of our kids. Because at the end of the day, a Beaverton School District student's access to a high-quality, well-rounded education should not depend on their zip code. Thank you.
Thank you, Ingrid. Next up, Jeff.
Ron, right? Well, hey, folks. My name's Jeff Myers. I'm a parent of two students in the district and an advocate for all students, staff, families, and the community. Tonight, I'll be sending you an email, as well as the district leaders, the Oregon Department of Education, State Board of Education, Legislative Committees on Ed education, and reporters. I will also post it publicly on savoreganschools.com. Here's a preview, though. You and the district failed to follow Oregon law and rules when you adopted the new social science curriculum for grades K-5 last year. The law and rules clearly lay out the process. The key steps are to select and create the curriculum, get parent and community feedback, and then get board approval. Instead, the district approached the board before the curriculum was built. They just had things like learning targets and draft book lists. It was not a curriculum. I confirmed this with ODE, by the way. You should have rejected the district's recommendation. Instead, you unanimously voted for it while verbally high-fiving each other for being the first district in the first state to roll something like this out. This is a pattern of behavior in this district, the desire to be first at all costs. In 2015-16, you decided to go with a radically different and unproven reading program called Units of Study, created by the now infamous Lucy Calkins. You skipped a pilot and went all-in so you could be the first. It has led to significant drops in literacy rates. This reading program was debunked years ago, yet you still use it. In 2013-14, you brought the whole district into a research study on a new approach to student discipline. Per your own data, it was a failure. Even so, you pressed on with this new approach, leading to massive increases in classroom clears, disruptions, and violence. These are just some of the examples showing the district's pattern of going all-in on risky, unproven approaches that harm everyone involved. This needs to stop now. So let me be clear about my final point. Our kids are not your experiment! Thank you.
Yes? Okay. Hi, I'm Kristi Goncharowski. I have three students in the district. As a member of the BSD community and the election process for the school board, I find the two-minute restriction for parents to speak a systemic disadvantage and oppression by our public officers. Please, please consider extending the time to something more reasonable, about maybe five minutes. Anyways, now into the issue I come here for. I have filed a formal complaint on January 12th in regard to the COVID volunteer masking requirements for the unvaccinated community members. The language on the BSD website states, "Those volunteers with the perused exceptions may work with students, but..." The district is requiring them to be masked despite the district's general mask optional policy. OAR 3330191030 states, "Schools that grant a medical or religious exception to the vaccination requirement must take reasonable steps to ensure the unvaccinated volunteers are protected from contracting and spreading COVID-19." When I contacted district office last week, I was told that BSD's method of complying with the law as stated in the OAR rule was to require the unvaccinated volunteers to be masked. I thought the district prohibits discrimination based on religion. It is self-evident that those experimental injections do not stop transmission or infection, and the vaccine manufacturers themselves, along with the director of the CDC, have finally admitted this fact to the public. So why does BSD still have this outdated, unscientific restriction still in place? I ask you members to, of the school board, to please rescind this discriminatory and not inclusive rule so that BSD can be true to their values for our parents and community members who want to volunteer their time for our kids. I will end with this. I know, I'm gonna wrap it up.
If you want, if you have something else, you can email us.
The truth is like a lion. You don't have to defend it. Let it loose, and it will defend itself.
Next up, we have Daniel Kang.
Hi, yeah, thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk about the Bani slope, Filmy school boundary adjustment. So I heard from Steven, Dr. Steven Sparks, that, uh, the option two, I mean, the BSD is not going to change it, change it from option two, but still, many parents think that we better go with other option, like the original option one, because it can solve the overcrowd problem in Bani slope. And I heard that the only problem with option one is having to use the portable classrooms. But I think, uh, letting the students in, in, in the school they love is more important than the problem with the portable classrooms. So I, I hope BSD to reconsider and find a way to let all the kids stay in the school, in the current student, I mean, all the current student stay in the school. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. All right, the next section of our meeting is the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion that we adopt the consent agenda?
I move that we adopt the consent agenda.
I second the motion, Tom.
All right, uh, it has been properly moved and seconded that we are going to approve this consent agenda. Uh, board members, we'll take a vote now. Uh, you can answer with aye, nay, or abstain. Susan Greenberg.
Aye.
Karim Perez.
Aye.
Eric Simpson.
Aye.
Sunita Garg.
Aye.
Ugana Enenaya.
Aye.
Becky Timchuck.
Aye.
Tom Collette. Aye. And the motion passes unanimously. Next up, we have school reports. Um, our first report is Shoals Heights Elementary School, uh, and we have, uh, Principal Tracy Barrio Arce with us. Principal, I apologize if I got your last name right. Please correct me, uh, if, if there's a correct way to pronounce your last name.
Sorry, I was a little distracted, sorry. It's Barrio Arce.
Okay.
So I think you said it right.
Great. It's good to have you in front of us, and we look forward to your report.
So my name is Nicole Will, and I would like to introduce Tracy to everybody. She has been in the Beaverton School District for 23 years after coming to us from California. She was an assistant principal at both Jacob Wismer and at Keniman Elementary Schools before becoming the principal at Shoals Heights five years ago. And, um, her assistant principal, Erica Heslin, is here as well.
First, I would just like to thank you for your service. I really do appreciate, uh, what you do for our schools and our school district. Um, I'm happy to share with you today about some celebrations in our school. Um, I did ask staff- celebrations in our school. I did ask staff for some highlights, and the list was long. And one of the common themes that we noticed, though, revolved around our work that we're doing with social-emotional learning. We're really proud of our vision and our action statements that we are doing at Shoals Heights. We're very intentional with our welcoming of students. Every day is a new opportunity. Every day is a new chance to be great. Our Behavior, Health, and Wellness Team, they mentioned earlier, it's our student success coach and counselor, social worker, psychologist, admin, school nurse, works diligently to support all students. So we help support the social-emotional learning in the classroom setting that the classroom teachers deliver, but also help support students that need help with a little more intentional strategic supports. So that's one of the things that I believe helps make our school welcoming. We've also invested into calming spaces within each and every learning environment, so students who are not feeling in a space ready to learn have some time and tools to help regulate themselves so they can get back into that learning space. One of the things that we do is celebrate monthly together as a school community. So we celebrate each month in a very brief assembly where we focus on some of the kindness and the classroom character traits that we're working on, school-wide. And then we always end with our school song, which is "We Are a Family." So it's a great way to come together as a school community. Some of the things that we're still working on is really helping to support academics and, again, behavior in our post-COVID world. And we really do that through integration and collaboration. We intentionally include all of our students. We're very lucky to have an independent skills center at Shoals Heights, and our Gen Ed students and our independent skills center students work side by side in different settings. We also work really hard to collaborate with our support staff. Our ELD teachers work collaboratively with classroom teachers. Our academic coach work with teachers as far as interventions and tools and to help support our learners. And our student success coach helps implement systems within the classroom, and we help support students inside and outside of the classroom with the tools that they need. One of the things that we intentionally do is also providing time for teachers to collaborate within their teams, but also across the school. We have a really experienced staff, which we like to tap into each other's knowledge to help build a staff community, but also learn from each other. So that's one of the intentional things that we do. Something about Shoals Heights, I think we're currently closer to 640 students currently. We have 29 languages spoken, 13% economically disadvantaged, and 15% of students with disabilities, but know that that does include our independent skills center, and 14% of our English-language learners. And then we have some state data at the bottom. I think it's really hard to sum up a school in a short amount of time, and I welcome any of you that would like to come to Shoals Heights to please feel free to reach out and be happy to show you what goes on behind our school doors. At this time, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions from the board? Becky?
Tracy, thank you for being with us this evening. I look forward to joining you next week at the Kindness Assembly, and thank you for the invitation. What I'd like to know is you said that you make time, that you have time for team collaboration. I know that that is something that we hear from a lot of our schools, that they need more time to collaborate. Can you share with me how you've found a way to carve out that time within your school week?
I'm not going to say it's easy to find the time. Teachers are extremely busy, but they do have common planned time, which we are very intentional about. And then we do try to give time during some of our staff development days, when we have certain topics, we collaborate around them, or sometimes we create space just for that collaboration. For example, we were brainstorming different supports in grade levels, and then we would separate out, and then they would meet cross-grade levels to kind of learn from each other.
Sunita, and then Susan. Or Susan, yeah?
Thank you for coming today. I know it's been a tough three years, really, because it's not, it's easier this year, but it's still a difficult, I'm sure, being our kids to focus in schools. And that's kind of somewhat, my question is really about, and I didn't look at, you know, specifically the attendance, but I know it's been really tough. Last year I saw it, but I understand, you know, last year the in and out and difficulty with students, but I'm wondering if there's still somewhat of a challenge to get students to come back to school on a regular basis, and how the mental health truly is, because I know a lot of kids have trauma, as do staff, so thank you.
I would say that our attendance rates, although down, do seem to be doing fairly well. We have had a lot of actual illness this year. As far as the mental health, we're seeing more and more kids that are just lagging some skills, behaviors, communication, and so we really try to come together. Like the person on the screen earlier said, our Behavior, Health, and Wellness Teams are really an amazing opportunity. We meet weekly. We have regular kids that the team meets with daily, and then kids that need us that aren't necessarily our regulars. But I really think that team approach and just the support that it's able to provide, my student success coach and counselor are some of the hardest working people. They're on the go all the time, supporting kids and staff and just doing whatever it takes. We build support plans, and we try to look at what do the students need.
Sunita?
Thank you very much for your presentation. I'm impressed by your SEL learning for the students, and I wanted to hear a little bit more about your, you said calming rooms for the students. How do the kids, is it the teacher sends them there, or how do the kids know to go there?
I'm so glad you asked. We actually have calming, we call them calming corners. They're calming spaces in each and every learning environment. So this year, I used some of my building funds to help. A lot of teachers already had them, but just kind of replenish and make them even better. So in each classroom, they have a space where students can go when they're not feeling in a ready-to-learn space. So we talk about zones of regulation, and we really want them in the green zone. So in that space might be like a special chair or a special cushion, and they might have things they can fidget with. There's visual cues on like how to help get yourself back into regulation. So we do have that. We're very fortunate right now that my counselor and student success coach have a classroom that we have a wellness room in, and so when they're not out and about supporting, they're in that space, either working with students, or students can come to that space. So it's kind of two separate things.
Also, I mean, I noticed that the reading level for kindergarteners has gone down like 93, 82, or something like, and then 47%. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, I noticed that, too, and honestly, I'm not sure if it's what that's really attributed to beginning-of-the-year data, is what I'm guessing. I wonder if some of it is, we had a lot of students who went to preschool, and due to COVID, I think some students didn't have that experience. That would be my guess, but I don't know.
Are there any interventions being done in the classroom to help them bring their reading level better?
Yeah, we don't start official intervention in kindergarten until January, but the teachers, yes, they work with kids where they're at, and we've always had kind of a wide range of levels in every classroom. We do notice that since COVID, the range seems even greater, more so in our upper grades than our primary.
Okay, thank you so much.
So, Chris Parcy, the question really, so just to clarify, the Kinder Readiness, that's an assessment that's given to kids upon entering kindergarten, just to see the status in terms of where they lie. It's not something that we do at the end of the year. So just for clarity for the board, it's an incoming assessment due to our kindergarten students.
Yeah.
Karim?
Hi, I had, I observed that your test scores are really high in general, but specifically for your students with disabilities are like twice as high, double success for your students in math and in language arts. And so, and I noticed that for your Hispanic-Latino students as well, which isn't common. I'm wondering, are there specific things that you're doing at your school, specific, yeah, specific things that you might be doing at your school that have such, cause, you know, that allow you to have such high scores?
Specifically to students with...
Who are in special education, specifically?
I don't know that we're doing anything different than a lot of others. We are using the special education curriculum. They're getting that small group instruction within the resource room. So I had a pretty experienced resource room teacher for the past few years. I have a new one this year who's fantastic. But I just think that we work really hard, as all schools do, in classrooms as well, to meet students where they're at. And there's a lot of collaboration also with the special education team and the classroom teachers, because we want students to be making growth no matter where they start.
Thank you.
Sunita?
This is not a question, but I wanted to thank Dr. Balderas for that clarification, because when we look at that readiness score and we see that dip, it feels like it's happening in the classroom. But if it's a pre-exam, then that makes sense, because if the kids didn't go to preschool, then that can happen. So thank you. Thanks for that clarification.
Ugana?
Thank you so very much for, can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Okay, awesome. Thanks for your presentation. The question I have is around your participation rates, and I, your numbers are, for the most part, they are, they're good. And the question I have is around teachers and staff reporting their contribute to school decision-making. That number went from 76% to 77, and then 58%, and that's like the only, the only number that doesn't look so good on your, on your rates. Is there anything that caused that number to go down? Are you engaging your teachers and staff? I just want to know if you can share more around that.
Yes, I've been reflecting on that, too. There was a lot of dissatisfaction in regards to some of our COVID protocols and the reality of social distancing. So I'm curious if that plays a part into it. I do have representatives from each team that I meet with months, once a month, and then also, and they go back to their teams and they report back. So there is decision-making input in that format. And we also do spend some of our class or staff development time, if needed, on building-wide decisions. So I do have, I call and point people that work within each team that provide input, speak for their teams in decision-making. So I really do think that that might have something to do with some of the COVID regulations that I needed to put in place that weren't popular.
Okay, thank you. And I want to thank you for your numbers around students missing. If you are done 10 days of school, sorry, I can't read well tonight. That number went all the way down to 63%, so thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Other questions from the board? Okay, thank you for the presentation. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next up, we'll have Principal Nizlanic.
Good evening. Good evening, Superintendent Balderas, Chair Collet, Board. My name's Ken Bell. I'm the executive administrator for High Schools and Option Programs, and I have the pleasure of introducing Southridge Principal David Nizlanic. And as I do that, I would just like to let you know that this past week, he was honored by the Oregon Music Education Association as the outstanding administrator in his support of the arts, so. And with that, I'll turn it over to him and let him share his school with you.
Awesome. Thank you very much. I sit here alongside my peers who are not here tonight. They're all supervising basketball games. I work alongside Shoshi Giyoka, Chris Big, Caitlin Stone-Haschek, our assistant principals. I begin tonight with a picture that is on the slide deck that you all have in front of you. It's our seniors visiting Greenway. Every year at the end of the school year, we take our seniors down to the elementary schools and do a graduation walk. And the reason we do that is not to honor the seniors, but so that the elementary students can see themselves as a senior. It also is about community. You know, as a high school, we look at our individual data, but to be honest, we're part of a bigger system. And what we get to celebrate is a culmination of the hard work of many, many people before us. Several things we're working on that are bright spots and celebrations. The first one is the Newcomer Center. We began a Newcomer Center last February. It filled instantly, which is why we began at Southridge, 20 students. This next week, we'll be exiting nine of those students who will be going into mainstream classes. We have students from Afghanistan, Ukraine, indigenous Koto-Mollans, and then the newer arrivals from Venezuela and Colombia, which is impacting the system. The students are in the Newcomer Center four out of eight periods. The other periods in their school day, they're out mainstreamed with the general population, and they're doing wonderful. It's been a wonderful addition to the school. Second highlight is dual language. As you all know, we began dual language in 2019, a year after the boundary shift happened, because we had nine students that were moving from the Beaverton High School boundary into the Southridge High School boundary. And so we pushed to begin a second dual-language program at Southridge High School. Currently, we have 127 students in dual language, ninth grade through 12th grade. For many high school dual-language programs across the country, it will, the program ends after 10th grade. Ours goes through 12th grade, and the reason for that is because we're able to combine IB with dual-language and with CTE, and so we streamlined our programs together, and so our students are able to take IB classes in Spanish at Southridge High School. And not all of our dual-language students are Spanish-first speaking students, but they have the access, the junior, senior year. As you know, the goals of dual languages is threefold, you know, bilingual, bi-cultural, and socially politically competent individuals that are based in academic success, and that's our goal with our students. Some data I ran this week for us. Last three-year graduation data, so 2020 through 2022, our Gen Ed populations averaged 88%, EL population is 68.9%, and dual-language is 85.5%. So already in three years, we're seeing some huge growth with our students, many of them in the EL program. I also want to highlight IB for all. We're the second school in the state to add the career program several years ago. It allowed students in the CTE pathways to access IB classes. I wish, when my students were in school in the Beaverton District, they had this opportunity, because it's an amazing tool and program they're able to provide our students. IB for all at Southridge means access in Spanish and English. It means access in all six program areas. It means that you can access it through a CTE pathway. It also means you can be a diploma student or just a certificate student, and that's why our numbers are going up in IB for all. But it also highlights the importance at Southridge for the CTE programs. What we're working on is twofold, and it comes from work we did last year. Last year, we spent the year working on a strategic plan at Southridge. It was my sixth year in the building, and so we spent the year working with parents, students, faculty, community partners. We had multiple focus groups. We had multiple parent meetings. I had a task force of parents, a task force of students, task force of staff that came together, and they lent, they focused in on instruction and belonging as our two areas. So we're really focusing on instruction. And in instruction, more specifically, how students interact with information, how students interact with text or with verbal information and moving forward. Belonging is our second area of focus, because we know Belonging is our second, um, area of focus because we know coming out of COVID, uh, that sense of belonging is important. Uh, we're doing some really focused work around how we can address, um, belonging in the classroom and how they can look at the school as a whole, and how voice and intuition can also play a role. Some data points I want to highlight. Um, first of all, today, we got our, a graduation cohort data from last year. We had eighteen dropouts, um, of last year's graduating class. Eighteen of eighteen are from lower-income families. And I think that's some research we need to look into and some data we got to look into because it tells us something. Our kids are leaving school to work. And at the high school level, when you look at students and family need, a lot of it is income-based, not education-based, and I think that's really a powerful force. And as I pull together here, I just want to highlight with this last slide. And this last slide is from graduation last year. And it is an honor to be here and to present. And to every school board member, thank you for your service to the district. And are there any questions?
Questions from the board? Susan.
First of all, David, it's an honor to be the school board rep for Southridge High School. Um, and I appreciate always your enthusiasm, um, and your dedication to the students of Southridge and to the students of Beaverton School District because I know that when you have these innovative programs, you're thinking about all students. So thank you for that. Um, so I have a couple of questions, um, well, actually a few. Um, and this one popped in my head, and it's going to be a personal one, uh, when you were talking about dropouts. When, so I'm just going to say, ask the question straight, and it's really personal. But someone like my child who had a difficult time in school, would she be considered a dropout? Or is there a different kind of statistic for someone like?
I think it's a great question. And the reason I threw that data in there and it came in today is because when I looked at that data, it made me pause and think about students. Not think about it in terms of data points, but about, we have eighteen individuals I know that didn't graduate in this cohort. I also know the data behind them. And so really, the question is, is it a push-out situation versus a dropout? And so when we look at our terminology, how can we best fit the needs of our students and our families into this paradigm that we call public education? I also know that anxiety plays a role. And I know that, you know, in, in the conversations we've had, how can we best help students that don't see themselves in a school classroom or in a setting of education? They really have anxiety going into that learning space. What can we do to support them? That's where I think the behavioral health and wellness work is fantastic. The wellness spaces that we put in place at Southridge have been game changers. Um, the work across the district to meet the needs of students is important. But at the end of the day, it's that empathy interview with the student to see where they're at. And then we maybe need to look at defining education differently for some students. And what does that look like and feel like and sound like? I don't have the answer for that, um, but I do know that it's there. And I do know that we, as a system, uh, need to listen to what our students are saying.
I appreciate that, David, um, because I know that, you know, I look at it from the lens of my child, but I, I look at the statistics and you said eighteen dropouts came from the lower income.
Yeah.
Um, and already, you know, Southridge is a lower populated school. And then I have a question related to lower income because I saw the statistics there of eighteen percent. And I have to say, I was really surprised by that because that seems low. So I was just wondering if you could speak to how that's defined now? Because you said there's a different.
Of course.
Definition there?
I think the, the, this year, we are defining, uh, lower SES through a different ratio, a different matrix. Uh, and I can't speak to that because I don't know it very well. I do know in the building, when we're working with our student population, we're defining our population in the old definition of roughly forty percent. We also know that we have many families who haven't registered for free reduced lunch, which is why the numbers are a problem. Uh, but if you were to, to look at athletic fees that are not paid, activity fees that are not paid, students that are asked to waive different fees, uh, we're looking at about a forty percent poverty rate. Now, that's an old definition. And so be careful with that because how we define poverty now or lower income looks different.
So I'm going to ask this to whoever who can answer it. So are those metrics decided by ODE, um, by some other, um? I mean, how, why was there a change in the metrics and how they're done? And if you can look at the, your Southridge and you know that there's more struggling than what it says, then we're giving, I don't want to say misinformation, but it doesn't seem to be connecting to our students, and that's disturbing.
Yeah, I think it's, it's us, um, working within a new definition and being able to articulate that definition, which I am not able to do that. And I can't speak for anyone in the room because I don't, I don't know.
We have a nutrition presentation right next door, right, I mean, right, right after this. Charity can possibly do that because I think she's going to be able to define that. But also, uh, being in school districts, it's also, again, who turns in those forms in the past? In terms of, at the high school level, there's less kids that turn in forms. That's why there's typically a higher free or reduced meal rate at the elementary level. And it gets slowly less and less when you get to the secondary.
Right. There's a great question, Susan, because I think as we sit and look with, with what our students need and where they're at, how we can, how we can look at the student need, not the percentage need of students that need the need. Yeah.
And going on and on and on, but that is, uh, to me, a red flag that we're not really seeing the true picture because, you know, who's able, who's taking lunches and not? And I understand it's how it's done, but it's a concern.
I might actually take that thought and reframe that thought for myself. And when I reframe that thought is, uh, where is that missing piece? And then how can I fill that information to support students? So when I reframe it from maybe being untrue to being what is missing and then moving forward.
And I'll just tag on there, Director Greenberg. Um, during COVID, um, what, what it looked like, um, to identify, um, free and reduced, uh, meals, for example, that number, um, that meals became offered to all students. And so that was the pivotal point where, um, how we looked at data became, it was different than anything we'd ever experienced. And we're now kind of on the other side of that, um, recalibrating. And that's, that's some of the differences about what we see relative to those numbers.
Yeah.
Sunita.
Uh, Southridge is very special to me because both my kids graduated from Southridge. Um, I was very appreciative of your belonging part. And I was able to attend one of the talks that you had on race. That was very interesting, and a lot of community members went to that too, where students could voice what they were feeling and what they were going through. So that, I hope that keeps on going, where kids get a chance to talk with other peers and administrators of what they are feeling and what they are going through in a school environment. So thank you for that. And, um, my other question, I don't know if it's a question. Um, I was noticing that your graduation rates are in eighties. But when I look at the college readiness, ACT scores, they're not that high.
Right.
So, um, wh- what is this gap? And what can we do about it in schools? And I have one more question after that, so.
That's a great question. It's actually a question we were working around the last month that's in, in Southridge, um, around the, the idea of literacy. Uh, as we begin to drill down what students are needing coming out of CDL, the area that we think we need to lean into is literacy. Being able to, to understand, decode, decipher, use text, understand vocabulary. We have over forty percent of our population that is a non-English-first speaking families. That doesn't, it's not a detriment when I say that. It just means we need to be really thoughtful of the strategies we put in play to make sure we're supporting students, all students in decoding. So when you look at college readiness and you look at the exams that students are taking, it's around being able to, to understand the question being asked and then to respond using literacy skills. And that's the area that we're leaning into, we need to lean into better. First comment you made on the next conversation around race is, uh, March eighth, uh, from four-thirty to six-thirty. Uh, and we have a team of staff members from across the district working on that, that night.
Becky, then Karen and Ugana.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, Karen and Ugana.
Hi, David. Um, it's exciting to see, you know, um, that you have that data to show that students who are in the dual language program have that eighty-five point five percent graduation rate and that they are having opportunities to have, um, access to IB for All and CTE certification and not in exclusion of dual language, but as a part of. Um, in, in the research, students who take at least one CTE course are more likely to graduate as well. And with dual language program research also being positive to our graduation. Um, as I think about the eighteen students who didn't graduate, um, I know that our policies currently is, are that if, um, a student does not have an IP, then they can't continue that pathway into the age of twenty-one. So, um, as I think about, I don't know if your eighteen students, um, what some, if they have IAPs or not. But if they don't, then, um, their options are more limited into what we can offer. So, um, as we think about having different pathways to graduation that you talked about and having longer pathways to graduation for some, if they're working, they might need a little bit longer to get there. Or for some of your newcomers, they might need a little bit longer pathway. Um, I guess it's more of a statement as, um, we need to continue to look at our policies to see how do we adapt our policies to allow for you to continue to support your, our students um, to that final goal of graduation and what they want to do beyond. Um, but I know that for currently, it's one of those limiting factors. Are there other factors that would prevent you from being able to help those eighteen to graduation?
I think that would be the primary factor. And the second would be access to the classes and the content. Most of our students that don't reach that point have interrupted learning at some point in their educational career. That looks different by student. Um, I think a fluency level to that access also is important. And how can we make sure that no matter the zip code, no matter the background that is students are accessing classes, we can open that up? But the newcomer center, that question actually is really important because we have some students arriving to us, um, from different backgrounds, seventeen or eighteen years old. And then how can we make sure we're providing them that opportunity? Um, because they're coming here for a better life. So how can we make sure that we're meeting those needs? Those questions are complex, but I think this system in Beaverton, the one that we're, we're creating and building, will meet the needs of students.
And I see that, um, in my perspective, I don't know that this, I'm not speaking for the board. I'm speaking for myself, um, is that any student that enters our Beaverton School District is our student until graduation. Um, and so, at least in my perspective, um, and would love to work with our board, to continue to work with our board to see how do we make that pathway accessible for all students to get to their, um, goal of graduation.
Ugana and then, or, Susan, do you have a follow-up to what Karen just said?
Uh, and it's about, um, PCC. David, I know that you have a relationship there. And I was wondering if you could speak to it because it ties into what Karen's speaking to. And I, you know, if we were going to talk about, I totally agree with Karen when it comes to, you know, keeping our kids in the path and feeling safe to be.
Yeah, Susan, you, you know, because we visit about this all the time. I'm, I'm wondering, and this is a wondering, um, how we as a system can partner better with community colleges to provide a high school, community college model that is interactive, uh, that builds on the success of early college, that builds on CTE and allows us to move forward. I label that, call that name, that sustainability, high school sustainability. Um, but I'm, I wonder what that looks like because it's conversations that take place in vacuums sometimes, and we're a very large system. I know there's been some good work that were done in other buildings or, or other districts with dual credit and how to access dual credit and how to move forward. And how do we get kids on campuses and not campuses on our campus? Uh, and I think there's a goldmine there for thoughtful.
Ugana and then Sunita.
Thank you very much, um, David, for your presentation. Um, I was, uh, when you were talking about the newcomer center, um, that piqued my interest. Is this a place where, because I have never heard about it before. Is this a place where, um, is this a place you enroll your, um, immigrant students? Or is this more like a resource center for them?
Oh, that's a great question. Uh, in a, in a nutshell, it is, uh, educational experience for students who are new to the country, either through immigrant status or refugee status. Uh, many of the students have interrupted learning at some point in their past. Um, several students have only been in school for grades one and two. Uh, but it's kind of a catch-all for students where English is not their first language. It might be their third, fourth, or fifth language. Um, and how can we give them the skills to be successful, successful in a predominantly English-speaking classroom? At Southridge specifically, they can go into a Spanish-speaking classroom, but not all the kids speak Spanish because many of them speak Dari or Farsi.
Okay. Um, and then my, um, next question is around the, um, around your participation rates. I see that the numbers came down from nine hundred and ninety-one all the way down to two hundred and seventy.
Yeah.
That is, that, that's, that's an improvement. But I'm guessing that the, the, um, I'm guessing that the pandemic played a role in that number coming down drastically. And I was wondering if you plan to maintain it that way?
Yeah, you, you got it right. You got that one right. It is a, a pure outcome of the pandemic. Uh, as we move into the testing cycle this year, uh, we expect those numbers to increase and go back to the traditional patterns. At Southridge, we've never had a high exclusion rate for testing. Most kids take that, and we expect to go back to that, that structure. But last year, uh, many, many, many kids opted out. It also didn't impact graduation last year. And so for families, it wasn't a, a, a driving force.
Okay. Thank you very much, and thank you for your presentation.
You're welcome.
Sunita.
Um, yeah, I had a follow-up question, you know, like, when the kids are struggling, we do interventions for them. It have, do we already do this or do we think about doing this? We came out from an online session type of a class. I'm not saying go back to online, but provide help and as a resource. So if a kid is struggling in math, have the certain concepts so that they can go there and brush up on whatever they are struggling with. And then if they have further questions, then they can come back to the teachers. Is that being thought about or?
It is. We actually have three intervention models we're running right now, and really quickly. Uh, one is through a seminar structure we have where every other day, during the, the access tutorial time, students have intervention support from all the core teachers.
Okay.
Uh, social studies, science, language arts, and math. Uh, we also run a, uh, credit recovery intervention option through our ESAR-funded positions. Uh, and that is housed in our, it's called Skyhawk Support Network. So the library has been converted to a student support center. And the third option model we have is a, uh, structure we're running through cores and the core classes, in addition to seminar, providing, um, intervention classes.
Okay. So have you thought about, like, going in where the kid can do it themselves? Like have core subjects online so that they can just, if they, if they are being taught about some?
Oh, Sunita, you're speaking my language here. Um, if I, 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 I don't know how to say this without making this really long. I am wondering if we look at providing asynchronous opportunities online with, with office hours in a building that provides the support of the classroom teacher to meet the needs of the students.
Yes, that's.
I say that carefully, but I, I, I'm, I've been exploring that as Susan, that, that, as Mr. and Ms. Greenberg knows, for six years now.
That would be something very useful for the students, I think. Thank you. Yeah. Okay.
Other questions from the board?
Thank you as always. I always appreciate your deep thinking around, uh, the issues that your students face and, um.
Well, it's a pleasure to be here, and I thank you for your time. And I think I went way over my fifteen minutes, and I apologize because I know you have a late evening.
It's okay. It was a great conversation.
Just want to say that I was at four seven, four minutes and, uh, fifty-eight seconds.
You're not being judged on the, the amount of time. Okay, uh, next up, we have a department update from nutrition. Charity's here to walk us through it. I see.
Good evening. It's a pleasure for me to introduce to you, for those of you who have not met, Charity Rawls. She's our administrator for Nutrition Services. She has worked for the Beaverton School District for twelve years and three years in her current role. In addition, as the board, um, was shared, it was shared with, from Dr. Balderas this last weekend, we just completed, um, ODE just completed their procurement review of our Nutrition Services Program. And the review stated that Beaverton School's Nutrition Services was one of the best districts they had reviewed with regards to compliance. Also noteworthy was that there were no corrective actions were required. That's unheard of when it comes to any kind of review that comes out of ODE in any kind of Nutrition Services Program. in any kind of nutrition services program across the state. And I truly commend Charity for her leadership in the department, her incredibly calm demeanor in every facet that she faces, so. Charity.
Thank you, Carl. Good evening, Superintendent Baldarris, Chair Colette, and school board members. I know you have my report, so I just wanted to highlight a couple of things. I'm also available to answer any questions you have, particularly about the last topic that was brought up with regards to free and reduced numbers. I can, I don't know exact, but I can give you some information that I know of of how that works. So from my report, I just wanted to highlight a little bit about our financial standing information. I know in the past I have brought up that we have always wanted to aim for having three months operating expenses on hand, which is what we're allowed to have. And because of us having that in the past is what enabled us through the pandemic to not have to take any funds directly from the general fund. So we never got below that and we are now actually exceeded that. So now we have to have in place how we intend to pay that down to get to the three months. So I think similar to the school district, we got additional funds due to COVID for supply, supply chain assistance. And then also we had a credible number of students eating with us last year and had that reimbursed at a higher rate. So with those funds, we have also kind of a glide path to get us down to where we expect our costs to meet with what our revenues will be with kind of pre-pandemic numbers we're seeing with student participation. And then I want to talk a little bit about staffing. That continues to be a challenge for us and I know every other department in the district. And it does impact the services that we're able to provide. We are seeing kind of the other side of it a little bit. That was mentioned earlier by Kirsty with OSEA. We're down to, I think, eleven positions and we have identified four or five candidates for some of those, so we're, we're getting there, we're almost there. And that will hopefully allow us to plan better and be prepared to kind of move forward with a lot of the things we would like to do in our department. We feel like we've been treading water a little bit the last couple of years. So getting that staffing up there will help us to make plans for the future a little bit more and expand our services like we haven't been able to do during the pandemic. And the other piece I wanted to add though is that we tend to talk about the negative side of staffing, but I did want to highlight the great work that our staff is doing in our schools. They've continued to be extremely flexible. We call them in the morning and say, gosh, we needed to go to a different school to work today. And they're always willing to do that. So I really want to commend them for their continued flexibility and for continuing to make sure to put kids first, to make sure they get fed. One other thing I wanted to add that didn't make this report, just to echo kind of what Kirsty said as well, is that Nutrition Services put on a professional development program last Friday. We did four hours of training. And while there was some trepidation about it, and we've also learned quite a bit on how to do it better in the future, we feel it's a really great opportunity for us. Nutrition Services has requirements for professional standards training for all of our staff from USDA. So every single staff member in the kitchens needs six hours of specific training every year. All of our leads, all of our supervisors need ten hours. I need twelve hours. And having this opportunity and time to set aside to do that specific training for our staff, we feel is really beneficial and helpful for them. So we really appreciate it and look forward to doing it in the future as well. And if you have any questions, I can answer them.
Questions from the board? Susan, Eric, then Karen.
Today's polite day on the school board. First of all, thank you so much for being here today and it's nice to see you in person. It's been a while, so it's nice to see you. So I, I, I'm going to follow up on the question I was asking David because I'm very confused about the, I mean, I, I think I understand it, meaning there's less students that are participating in the free and reduced lunch. So like a school like South Ridge, they're going, their poverty level is based on how many students access free and reduced lunch. But it just seems like it's not telling the true peck. I mean, what I would see is the true picture, so I don't know if that's a question for you or who it is or if it's more of a comment.
I can add some information to that. So I think at, one, it's never been a true picture, right? We've always relied on free and reduced numbers. And there's always families we know that don't apply or don't take advantage of those numbers. So it's just one that's been available to use and that does go through a verification process. And that's why we use it. So it's been pretty good, but also it's not the full picture either. I think we've gotten to, because meals were free for two years, we've also seen a decrease in families filling out applications. We have tried to, you know, send out information to families so they know to apply. We're reaching out individually to families when we see that they've started to grow some negative balances. But that's, that's a piece of it. Additionally, we've also seen people who have moved kind of just above the federal rates and we use the federal numbers. So we're using the expanded income guidelines to provide meals for those families. We have right now over sixteen hundred students who are accessing meals in that metric, which is not included in the federal numbers. So that's one hundred and eighty-five percent of poverty up to three hundred percent. So that's pulling some of the numbers out. We didn't used to have flex online, which isn't as many students right now, but some of those students, they're at about a thirty percent free and reduced rate for those students as well, so that's going to pull some of them too.
So I have a follow-up question. It's more of a statewide question in terms of the SNAP dollars that are available to families that are struggling, you know, to put food on their table. That's going down. And I have to believe that's going to impact our students in schools, you know, the fact. So I just say, think this is kind of circular kind of conversation, but something I wanted to point out. And then I have a question about your point. I just want to understand it and probably Eric already does and this is where his comments coming from. But you're, you're over budget in a sense, so you're trying to draw down the money you have, which seems so ironic to me, but.
We wish we could have more on that, just in case too.
And but I, and I don't know how you do that. I don't know if that's like the farm-to-table, taking advantage of that more if you can. I don't know. But I, I just find that it doesn't, I guess, more of a comment that, you know, I know that the pressure on nutrition services is, you can't be under a certain amount, but you also can't be over a certain amount. And I, I, you have a difficult job, is all I'm saying. And I appreciate what you do because certainly it's hard to literally balance the budget. So thank you.
Eric?
I'm going to pivot to non-financial numbers. Actually, your community transition program, tell us more about that. That sounded really interesting that you're maybe like, you know, you have students and people might be interested in the, in all the service industry like that. So maybe, I know you had shortages of people for a long time, still do. So maybe explain that a little bit more.
Sure. So we've been working with the CTP program to provide opportunities for students to do some, get some work experience. So we started with just a couple kitchens where students would go and help out for a few, like about two hours, I think, a day, a few days a week. And we've grown that to several more kitchens. And some of those students, we are kind of putting together more of a formalized program for them to go through to get training on, you know, what to take care of, you know, prepping things, serving things, and then even learning the point-of-sale. And if they can accomplish and do kind of all the tasks in the kitchen, we are looking at hiring some of those students. And we have hired a CTP student who went through the program and is an employee with us now. So we are, had another student who is a potential student as well, who we might look at hiring. So definitely opportunities there, which is great if we can kind of grow our own and then give those students those opportunities. So we're pretty excited about it.
Karen?
I went to the CTP graduation and my former kindergartner is the person you've hired for one of your, from one of our schools. So that was pretty exciting to be at her graduation and to know that she had a job within the district, specifically Nutrition Services. So I, I have a budget question. So I'm seeing that, you know, we, there's a, the staff salaries, the benefit increase and the increased supply costs, which will, you'll be using that money that was over to kind of address some of those pieces. But I'm thinking long-term, how will we be addressing, you know, some of those costs? Because we won't have that extra little pocket of money.
We won't have those COVID extra funds, yes. So some of that is just working through that this year while we're looking at, so looking at our staffing numbers and staffing models, how we will have to maybe adjust staffing to meet that. We've already kind of done that through having shortage of staffing as well, looking for different supplies potentially that we'll need to purchase and make adjustments that way to address those costs. One of the things we have pre-pandemic that we don't have as much right now is ten percent of our revenue used to come from à la carte sales. And we've been slowly reintroducing those. We do want to, and it's been kind of my team's mission is that we're a meals program. We're not an à la carte program, we're not a snack program. So we want to do that thoughtfully to bring those back. But that is another avenue to bring in revenue to meet some of that, what might become missing once we kind of get through the funds that we have now.
À la carte means like snacks, snack foods during different parts of the day or something?
Yeah. So we've had those traditionally middle school and up only. And we, that's what we will do. But we're being more thoughtful, particularly at the middle school level. It's more of a privilege at those levels if students are able to manage that. We'll let them purchase after meals have, they've gone through and got their meals. They can come back and buy a snack or two. But, and we always allow parents to put restrictions on that sort of thing too.
And I've been actually, when you had the shortages, I was actually volunteering at the schools, got my food handler card just in case you asked for it. But, and it was fun to be like, I was doing the fresh fruit vegetable program, counting out fruits and stuff that the kids could get. One of my questions was also around, oh, I wanted, you pointed out at the end about decreasing sugar for breakfast. I know we've had a lot of community members asking about how can we decrease the sugar? Even though we're within my understanding of the, what the, I don't remember what the organ, federal government standards of sugar levels. We're within those, is my understanding, but it's still really high. And with, you pointed out that the majority of our kids are eating breakfast at school. Like that's one of our largest spaces of when kids are eating breakfast. I'm wondering, I saw you're going to get less sugar cereal when that comes available. And I just wanted to thank you for addressing some of the sugar levels at breakfast time and wondering if we could continue to work on that as well long-term.
Absolutely. So there actually aren't any regulations specifically around added sugars. That is the, I think where the next child nutrition reauthorization is going to go is we'll be adding that to the restrict, to the nutrition requirements for meals. So some of it is just making those decisions ahead of time. So one, it's easier when we do get those regulations that we're already meeting them. But we were, we are looking at alternate things. Part of it is the way the meal pattern is developed for breakfast. It's focused on grains and then fruits and milk. It's really not focused on proteins at breakfast at all. So, but we are looking to add some protein options to incorporate for next year that would probably supplant some of our more traditional pastry-like items. So we're looking at a cheesecake idea and we're looking at a couple other things that might be more protein-focused. And we did finally get in the cereal that I mentioned, so we should be rolling that out shortly. So it's, the USDA has kind of a guideline to meet for that and that's what we're trying to meet at least to start with for all of our things, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions from the board? I just want to give you a big thank you. Your services are so important for our students, you know. When I think about some of the building blocks or foundations that support learning, you know, making sure we have a safe environment for all of our kids and then making sure our kids are all well-fed so that they're able to learn. And I, I appreciate the work that you've done. I've watched over the last couple of years as you were able to do amazing things for our students during the pandemic. I mean, at certain points, you had buses running out into the community to make sure that people were fed. That was incredible. And to be able to have the resources and the smart budgeting so that you were able to do those extra things during that time and then come back now and refill that bucket, because who knows what's coming down the road? You see in the newspaper every day, you know, examples of poor budgeting and that, you know, you can see what that results in, which is really negative. This is an example of really positive budgeting. And thank you for having that foresight to be able to help our students. That's incredible.
Thank you so much.
All right. Next up, speaking of budgeting, we have Associate Superintendent Mike Schofield with our budget report, or our financial update, I should say. It's more than just budget.
Yep. Thank you, Chair Colette, in recognition of School Board Month. Thank you so much for the service to our students, staff, and community. We appreciate that. I'm working diligently to try to figure out how to double your bonus in the budget somehow. I haven't come up with solutions yet, but I'm, I'm committed to working toward it. So thanks again. I appreciate it. I've got the update for the monthly financial report. You see, we've got your investments, we've got the class size stuff. Again, this month I'll be quick and I'll draw you to our financial projection as of December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. That's the one pager that kind of shows where we think we're headed in the general fund. If you go to the top right-hand section of that, as was pointed out earlier, we've got an error on the, on the heading of that. It should be just our year-end forecast. It says prior year-end forecast, so I'll fix that on future ones. So appreciate pointing that out so I can fix that. In terms of the numbers on the expenditure side, nothing has changed this month from last month. We've kind of held steady in terms of what our projections are on expenditures. Probably the next likely update where we'll move numbers around won't be till about March. So, but, but we're taking a look at it. We did take down in the local property tax section, our property taxes. We took it down by one million. Most of our collections are in, you know, we get most of our money by the first, second week of December and looking out into the rest of the year. It looks like our collections might come in about a million dollars short there. So we brought that number down by a million dollars. I, I agree, Eric, same thing. We're, we're kind of wondering about that. We are seeing actually, our, our local option levies actually improved a little bit in terms of how things are coming in. So it must be some folks are falling into that bracket where they're, they're getting subject to the local option, but collections aren't necessarily improving on the regular property tax side. So that's where we're at on the finances. The other change we made is to our investments. If you look at the investments, we had budgeted for about six hundred thousand dollars based on where interest rates were about a year ago. They are much improved in terms of what you can get. I think the local government investment pool is paying close to three and a half percent now. So we upped that from six hundred thousand to two million for this year. So that's a boost. We'll take that. And, and that's all I have to report. If you have questions, me, I'm happy to answer.
Questions from the board? Becky and then Eric?
So my question is on, again, you clarified it's a year-end forecast there. So under expenditures for salaries and benefits, you're still predicting that we're going to be about four million under what you budgeted for? And I would still like, it just seems like we're still hiring and we're still adding. Is it because of retirements or, you know?
We, we had pretty significant turnover from last year to this year. And in addition to that, you've heard folks are still trying to hire positions that we've got budgeted and are open, but they just haven't been able to fill. So that's prime, that's most of it.
That's most of it. So it's the, the four million. And then obviously benefits would come right with the, with the salaries. And then I was going to make a comment about the property taxes because what you're reading in the paper is a lot of other entities are getting more than what they thought they were going to get from, from that, so.
It, it may be fluky. You know, we're kind of making this call a little bit earlier in the year than we normally do. We'll update it again in March. That's where we'll, we'll get some of those property taxes that are in arrears. Those will sometime catch, catch up in March. So hopefully it'll improve a little bit, but yeah, we, we'll look into the number.
I just think we really need to make note of that during this budgetary process, that a lot of our folks just think these are givens and they're things you can count on. And there's so much of all of this are things that we cannot count on. So we need, we need to, when we're taking this into budgetary process, that again, just figuring out where the revenue streams are and what kind of things we can control and things that we, you know, we can't control. So thank you.
Thank you.
Eric?
I just one question. Like I was looking, I always look at the projected schools and see, you know, if there's attrition, like where you thought it would be, where it is. And it looked like the flex online, it looked like, you know, it's really decreasing faster maybe than bargain for. So strategically, is that, I mean, I know you can index people over from there to, you know, another brick and mortar school. But is that like, is there a strategy change there with flex online or what's your thoughts?
We've been doing that, that's a good question, Director Simpson. We've been doing that since September. The initial numbers didn't come through, so we've been reallocating staff as a part of a small staffing allocation committee that we have. So we've done some of that. We'll budget them at a lower level next year as well to try to be a little more on target. But typically, we don't like to move staff around at the start of school or even just before the start of school, but we've done more of that the last couple of years than I care to think about. So we, we, we do that on occasion and we've done it this year with flex.
So one little question on that, does that mean that appetite is like, people do want to go back into brick and mortar with their comrades and friends and all that versus like, you know?
Karen?
Hi, good evening.
Hi, good evening. Um, I was looking at the ESSR funds and where they are currently. And um, I'm seeing that most of our ESSR funds right now are still in the middle school. Um, there's multiple, I don't know, if I could do math right now, fourteen, fifteen positions um, at the middle school that are still ESSR-funded.
Yes.
I'm wondering how we're.
So remember, uh, last spring, we talked, I, I guess right before we adopted the budget, we went through ESSR and kind of the stair stepping down that we're doing? This is the year, um, it's kind of in the middle. And next year, we'll step that funding level down some more. One of the things that uh, was in the budget this year that impacted middle school more than others is we actually put uh, almost seven teachers at the middle school level from ESSR as kind of a, remember last year, middle schools were kind of a hot topic? And we said, what are some extra things we could do? And using those one-time resources to get class sizes a little lower at the middle school, we thought would be helpful this year. That's currently only planned for the current year, not next year. So as we put together our budget and our plans for next year, we come to you to talk about uh, how the spend down of ESSR will go for next year, what the plans are. You'll get to weigh in on that at that point. But that's correct. A lot of middle school resources right now.
Other questions from the board?
Mike, I just got one question for you and, and uh, feel free to answer this later. Um, but I'm, I'm wondering about, you know, as we're looking at going down to the legislature and talking to them about the difference in what they believe current service level is and what we know current service level is. Um, have you guys run any models on what would happen if we were funded at the current service, service level that they believe is the rate?
Yeah, it's not good. It's terrible. Um, it's actually really terrible. Uh, I, I've got some really rough numbers and I can get, I'll get better with that number probably in a week or so. Um, but i- it would be terr- at the nine-point-five-two billion as suggested, uh, that's, that's just not gonna do it for our district. We will be in uh, into pretty significant reductions at that point. Even with the reserve we have today, we'll, we'll go through that reserve in just a couple of years, it'll be all gone. So um, you'll hear a lot more from me about that soon. But that nine-point-five-two will not do it at all for our district. When you think about that, that's a two-point-four percent increase over the last biennium. And you think about what we have, uh, the pressures we've had on wages, uh, where we bargain contracts, that is just not gonna do it at all. Uh, when you think about a two-point-four percent raise over a two-year period. So with inflation and all the things you know about, that, that, that's just not, that's, that's not gonna cut it for K-12.
Anything you have in that area is helpful to us because as we're having conversations with legislators and we're getting ready for session, if we can put a finer point on what that means. I know you can't produce an alternate budget, right? It hasn't been prioritized. But if we could give them the sense of how many FTE that would look like or something like that, that could help us to be able to make our case.
We're working on that, Tom. We'll have something that we can put in your hands fairly soon that you can say, here's what happens to Beaverton.
So we can give you a, a, in a Friday memo. I know that uh, the board is meeting with legislators here pretty quick as well in terms of uh, uh, at the Northwest ESD. So I think what we can do in a Friday, I know Mike and I have talked quite a bit about this in terms of just give you the, a, a, a ballpark in terms of what we're thinking here in Beaverton, what that would be. And it's in the millions, millions.
Oh, yeah.
So closer to twenty, probably.
Yeah, I would say, i- if you, if, if you said, give me a number today, it'd be in the twenty million dollar range. And that includes spending down some of the reserves.
Yeah.
Uh, in, in addition to that.
I love the speaker thing. Um, so it also, I mean, I assume we'll see it in percentages as well because, I mean, the numbers are one thing, but percentages also kind of tuck to the impact of that. Um, and I don't know if there's a way of looking at like, then class sizes? Like, if you cut this much, then, you know, you look at class sizes? I don't know.
There's a group of us that are, uh, in fact, I was on a call uh, last week from, uh, with some folks from OSBA where they're trying to put together their, their one-page handout of kind of the impacts. And it shows percentages, it shows impacts to class size, number of teachers, a variety of ways that we can kind of express what a reduction would look like. Um, not that, again, as you mentioned, Chair Colette, that doesn't mean that we prioritize and that's what we're doing, but it gives you some idea of the flavor of what happens to class sizes if, if we have cuts in that range or what might happen to teachers. So um, we'll have that for you shortly. Thank you.
Appreciate your hard work, as always.
Goodbye.
Um, next up, we got Susan Rodriguez with school calendars. And after this, we're gonna take a, a ten-minute break of the board before we come back and do the second half of the meeting.
Good evening. Right before the break, let's make this quick. So you have in your packet some information about the calendars that have been developed for the next two school years. And I just want to share briefly a little bit about the process. Um, we brought together a team that included representation from operations, teaching and learning schools, the leadership of our organizations, BEA and OSEA, and experienced teacher. Um, this year, we also solicited input from our staff. A lot of the process of putting together a school calendar is truly driven by our employee contracts. We have contractual um, responsibilities that outline certain numbers of staff development days, et cetera. And so when we've solicited the survey from our staff, we actually asked them to rank uh, different features that we had to consider. Got a lot of really good feedback from that. Um, we also consulted with Cabinet multiple times and we received feedback from our students and staff through the strategic plan um, process. And then we did a focus group with principals as well. So um, features of the, these, both of these new calendars that are notable, as mentioned to you before, we are starting before Labor Day. It's not the first time we've done that. And it's um, very common. And obviously, our staff starts before Labor Day, it's our families, that this is gonna be um, more of a change. And we did that because uh, we have one of the longest school years in the area for our, for our licensed staff. And so uh, to avoid the problem we've been running into the last several years with the holiday in June, it's widely unpopular for our families to have a three-day weekend in June and then to return after the three-day weekend to finish school. And so to do that and to get out of that pattern and, and to allow for the time we needed this summer for summer programming, for our bond projects, we wanted to get out of that pattern. We felt like it was very important to communicate this um, as, a- as soon as we could, just because we understand that people are planning for their schedules and that's a significant change. These um, calendars also incorporate a fall break. It's a full break the week of Thanksgiving. That's new to Beaverton. And um, we did a little bit of change with some, the placement of our staff, one of our staff workdays. We moved it to June. We got some feedback that the late May workday may not have been as productive and helpful. And so the, um, we wanted to try something different. You heard tonight from Kirsty in OSEA about appreciating the staff development for our OSEA members. And uh, we, we are happy that we were able to do that. And next year, that day will, uh, it, we're planning to place it in pre-service. So the, the Friday before kids come, so that our OSEA members have a chance to do some of that staff development, look at schedules, be ready when our students come. And I don't know if I've shared that out with people, so may be news to some people. Uh, but that is a recent um, placement of that day. Um, I think that's all that I wanted to share, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions from the board? Sunita?
This is just to think ahead, you know, like maybe next year or even to kind of put in the major festivals in the calendar so that there is a, uh, some understanding in the staff that they're not planning an activity where kids may be fasting. So if we can do that, that would be really helpful.
Thank you so much for that. There is a committee that's working on that overlay that would be, that we can publish along with our calendar, that will helpfully show our educators and community where those special days fall because of the impact on learning and the impact on our community.
That would be very helpful.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Ugana?
Thanks Suzanne for your presentation. Um, when you say that the summer break is gonna be shorter, like how short is it gonna be? And is this an information that will pass across to our parents and family so they can, you know, plan their summer, you know, vacation around it? So how short are you talking about?
Thank you for the question. So we know that if we shift to starting before Labor Day, that that means when we get out in late June this summer, we'll be returning about one week sooner. So it's about a week shorter. But then once we do that, in subsequent years, we'll have the same amount of time for our summer. So it's, it's a sacrifice that we have to make now. We have a lot of bond projects, there's a lot of things that are impacted by even one week in the summer. But in order for us to calibrate our schedule, we have to have, we wanted people to know this summer's gonna be one week shorter. So thank you for asking.
Thank you.
Karen?
Hey, Susan. We had, um, I was thinking about as we shift our calendar, it'll disalign some of our staff um, ca- calendars of the children of some of our staff that don't, aren't in our district. Um, I was happy to hear you say that actually our unions have been a part of the conversation, um, both BEA and OSEA, um, and being a voice for them and, and negotiating all this. So um, just to clarify that, it wasn't something that we did as a district on our own, but it was actually in collaboration with our unions and other um, thinking through that part and recognizing that for some of our staff whose children are not in Beaverton, um, we know that that, um, recognizing that that might be impactful to them and their children.
Yes.
For one year at least.
Thank you for that. And we do, in addition to working with our internal stakeholders, we also connect with our Washington County counterparts about the development of their calendars as well because we know that we all share a community and a lot of our families live in other school districts and vice versa. As you might imagine, um, it's not easy for all of those school districts to have exactly the same schedule, but we do understand that it's important. And so we are communicating with them. Most of the districts around us have not finalized their calendar yet, and some won't finalize it until as late as April.
That was kind of my comment. I, I saw that one public comment came to me today on the same thing, but I wasn't sure. I was gonna look at Portland and Hillsborough, but I wasn't sure if their calendar's been locked down yet, so.
Yeah.
I mean, they might not know yet.
Yeah, we worked with them as we were in this process and we shared our, our work with them. And so when I saw the comment as well, it got my attention. And so we made sure to double-check with all of them today. And there is one district that has their calendar finalized, the others are in process, so.
Ugana, do you still have a question?
Yes, this is just a, is it a hypothetical question? Just a, a question for a parent out there who's wondering, why are we doing this? Why is this necessary? What would be a response to them?
Um, which part of this? Meaning this, the change in start?
Yes, yes. Why are we changing, why are we altering the calendar?
Absolutely. So um, like I said, we did solicit input from our community and from our staff. And uh, we found that there was wide unpopularity with getting out late in June, especially after a three-day weekend. And the Juneteenth holiday has been a fairly recent addition in our state. And so we previously did not have a three-day weekend in June, but we, we do now. So that was one piece. But another piece that we noticed is with the later dismissal in June, that both families and the district were finding there wasn't a lot of time to prep for summer programming. And that was impacting our families that were looking for community opportunities and they were late getting out. And it was also impacting our readiness for summer programming. So um, that's why we felt like it was necessary, like I said, to get out of the pattern of, of co- of hitting that late uh, third week in June. And so that's why we felt like we were doing right by the input we got to shift the calendar to prior to Labor Day.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board? Thank you, Susan. Appreciate the hard work on the calendar and uh, looking forward to the summer.
Thank you. And thank you also, um, Board Recognition Month. Thank you this month and every month for everything that you do.
Appreciate it. With that, we'll take a ten-minute break and come back.
Let's keep it going. So anyway, congratulations on being in the building. Really fantastic. And thank you for arranging the turnout tonight for us at the board meeting. Sort of old home week. I want to call your attention to page thirty seven. I want to call your attention to different pages in the book. Page thirty seven specifically talks about the services the E S D provides to the Beaverton School District, the support we provide to you all. Karen mentioned the breadth and depth of services we provide in the region, right? We run from Beaverton at forty thousand students to Jewel, which is two hundred and ninety five students. So you can imagine our ability to provide services to all of those various districts is pretty incredible. You see from the list here and the little nice cutout sheet, I want to call out a couple of items specifically. Beaverton's support of the outdoor school program and specifically the number of counselors that come from your high schools to support that program is pretty incredible. And without those high school counselors, outdoor school really can't happen in a meaningful way. You know, and then on a whole list of things like Willamette Promise, our various instructional support networks like Ninth Grade Success, the Attendance Collaborative Diverse Education Pathways, the REN, the Willamette Promise, et cetera. Really a deep breadth of programs we do offer. The Beaverton School District does have a unique niche in the E S D, and Dan will go over that a bit in his section. But again, just happy to be here a little bit of all home week and great to see a lot of friendly faces again. So thanks for having us.
All right. The one thing before I get into the general, I get the sexy part, which is like talk about how the money works and all that kind of stuff. But on the program side, another thing that David didn't speak to that I think is really important for when I think about Beaverton and your strategic work in the last few years, and I know that you're gearing up for another run at some strategic planning work, is our connection with the district around preschool and early learning. We are literally the most, we're the largest preschool and special education preschool provider in the state. And so we have a very big touch there. And we have a very thorough partnership with Beaverton. We are in partnership with you on a number of classrooms where we have students placed. And there's some resource that we bring to bear to actually create the conditions for students to be included at a high level. And so that's just a really big part of what we do with the district as well. Okay, so the local service plan, the next slide, please, thanks. So I just want to talk a little bit and very quickly about how the money works, what this plan is and how it is created. So this is, the E S D, actually, the vast majority of the funding at the E S D is actually grant resources and not the state school fund grant. So this plan is really just about the state school fund. So in the back of the L S P document that you have, you can see there's a section that says like value add programs and grant programs. You can see we have, we have like a lot of grant programming that we provide. This action that we're asking the board to take is really around how the general fund works, our state school fund. And so the way it works is money comes in from the state school fund. Four and a half percent statewide of the state school fund goes to E S Ds. And then E S Ds do what we're doing now, which is we collaboratively develop a plan for that in a regional service provision atmosphere. And so that money that comes in, for our E S D, we're about seventeen percent of the state when it comes to E S D enrollment. And so that money flows in, ten percent of that stays at the E S D, and that keeps our lights on and roofs and the basic operational part of our program. And then the rest flows out to districts in two ways. But really, in Beaverton, which is the niche relationship that we have with Beaverton and Hillsborough because of your size, that, on the slide here, you see the maroon slice, and that's twenty five percent of the funds stay at the E S D in what's called core services. Beaverton and Hillsborough do not participate in core. You're just too big for those services to be meaningful. So for instance, this is like servers and network support, a lot of special services that you all already do on your own. You're big enough that you can do that. And so for Beaverton, basically, this whole other part of the dollar bill besides the green, neon green highlight goes straight to the district. So ninety percent of the funds go directly to the district. And then there is one anomaly in there, and I'm going to speak to it in a moment. Next slide. And please interrupt me and ask questions as we go. So this is, for the sake of brevity, I'm not going to, I've done this with you guys every year that I've been superintendent. It's been in Hollywood Squares, hasn't been like in person, but the process has not changed. We do a lot of work in the fall to plan with our districts, with our superintendents, and also with district leads in different departments. And we create this draft plan and the program. And in November, our superintendents gather, we do it on the coast, and our superintendents vote on this plan. And so this plan before you has unanimous approval by the superintendents that were there, which is the vast majority of them, a few absent. And then, and then we go through this process, right? December, our board gets it, then we kick it out to districts in January, and off we go. April is an important moment, assuming that we get the votes to approve this plan. That's when districts need to select their services, and that's when we try to get pricing on that in April. It's hard to do when you're in legislative session, and then selections happen, and then we recruit, hire, and try to staff up the program needs of districts. Next slide. So again, this report is really about the general fund. There is on page twenty four, when the Student Success Act was passed, E S Ds are part of the act in terms of technical assistance. And so now, under statute, boards must also approve our plan for the Student Success Act as well. So you got the general fund and the S S A, and that's all together in this. Next slide. Oh, the small print slide. All right, here we go. So core services, like I said, Beaverton and Hillsborough don't participate in the same way that other districts do, where we hold back twenty five percent, and then we have this thing that we vote on, the services. What Beaverton and Hillsborough do do is they basically purchase back into the core. And you see the numbers here, Beaverton at about five hundred thousand dollars, about five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. And that supports the instruction department that we have at the E S D. And so things that you were participating in, David already went through this, from our instruction department, Ninth Grade Success Network, and Attendance Collaborative Diverse Educator Pathways, our REN, school safety and prevention systems, social, emotional, mental health, which is a learning network, and you have teams coming to our convenings and getting coaching. And then Willamette Promise, which is the dual credit that we do in conjunction with Willamette E S D that connects kids to college coursework in high school. So it's, and the other big part of that money goes to our grant writing department. And you'll can see somewhere in this report, there's a return on investment for grant writing. I'll probably get to it here if I slow myself down for a sec. But we have a small grant writing department that's funded, and we turn around pretty significant grants. My first year here was about six hundred percent return on investment for the amount that was put in for grants. So it's a small but mighty grant writing team. On the service credits, which is the other side, you can see that Beaverton's not on there, right? And that's because you get the money directly, and we don't like put it into an E S D account for you. Which, so other districts, they get it in an E S D account, and then they purchase service back. We just flow it straight back through to the district, and the district can make selections or not, and take it into your general fund, however you want to deal with those resources. So core services, we can skip this slide. Sorry, we're doing twenty of these. And so some of these slides are for other districts as well. So here's our service menu, and this is a big part of what the superintendents eventually vote on, and we get into the plan. And you can see, these are all basically fee-for-service. These are our menu. And school districts participate in some of these, a lot of these, or a few. So these are the services in this plan that you'd be approving, that we would then stand up and make sure are available to Beaverton as well as other school districts in the region. And lastly, we have our Student Success Act Technical Assistance Plan. So again, this is, E S Ds were put into S S A for technical assistance. We kind of break this into two main buckets. We call it Getting and Keeping the Money bucket, which is our support of your integrated guidance work. Originally, it was the Student Success Act applications, making sure you have grant support, making sure that O D E approves your plan. So we're in high connection with O D E on what they're looking for and what needs to be there. And then we do coaching with school districts to make sure that that's evident in the integrated guidance plans. And then we have kind of supporting, I don't have as much a flashy one, it's Getting and Keeping the Money. And then we just support the good work that you want to do in your S I A plans. And so for instance, in Beaverton, Ninth Grade Success is part of your original Student Success Act plan. And then we stand up the Ninth Grade Success Network and support Beaverton as well as other school districts who want to continue to do professional learning around those priority areas. And so that's basically what this bucket of money creates. And so again, superintendents in their staff put this menu of options together with us. And you're participating, like I said, I read off a bunch of them in a number of these, a number of these networks of learning. And with that, we're happy to take questions, be more specific about aspects of the document. I know that was fairly fast for a pretty chunky document that you have in your board packets.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Becky, I'll start with Becky, and then Karen.
So the bottom line is this. The things that we are able to do collaboratively that cost us less to do than collaboratively, rather than paying for things ourselves as a school district, which a lot of small school districts, there's a lot of things, but we have pointed out. But the bottom line, we are able to do things, whether it be I T support, or professional development, or special ed, is what we benefit from the most here in the Beaverton School District.
That is not a question, but I'm going to answer it as if it was. So the bottom line is, the bottom line is that the E S D is really, if you think about it, it's a purchasing co-op, right? So we can realize the benefit of having a hundred thousand students in our system to stand up things that typically districts either can't do on their own or becomes too expensive to do on your own. And so Beaverton, by nature of its size, doesn't participate in the core, right? Because you don't need these other things. The other eighteen school districts, they really need us to stand up these services. And by participating in this collaborative with us, co-op, not only you helping Beaverton, you can see like the services that you get directly with us, a lot of it's special education services, we didn't even talk about tonight. And that's really the big driver in Beaverton of what we do. But by participating, you're actually a regional partner, right? Like you are participating in Gaston Success. And there are real kids who live in Gaston who need success, right? Or Banks, or Forest Grove. And so we look at it as one region, right? Because that's who we are. And by your participation, we're able to stand up things that typically districts can't, or we're just better served to stand them up outside the district.
That was my question. So thank you. Did a great job. One more question, and this question is to you, Karen. Were you on the Beaverton School Board when Beaverton decided at one time not to be a part of the Educational Services District? And I want to know how we, Beaverton then saw that it was to our benefit to be a part of the E S D.
I knew someday I'd get that question. And yes, I was on the board then. And I was not on the board when Beaverton re-joined, is maybe the wrong word, is that the right word? Rejoined the E S D to take services. But I believe why that decision was made and why I encouraged that decision to be made is because of a change in the leadership of the E S D. That changed what kind of services were being provided and provided more services that were beneficial to Beaverton. Some of the Student Success Act sort of things, much better instruction department than there was when we pulled out. I mean, some things were stable the whole time, but a lot of improvement in things that benefit Beaverton.
Karen?
Hi, good evening. My wondering was around the little calendars, November, December, January. So when you said in April, there's a selection of the L S P online, I was just curious to see if, you know, how much change, if any, has there been in the services that we get from, that B S D has benefited from the E S D in the past three, five years? I don't know, if any.
So what has changed in terms of the quantity of services?
No, not quantity, just like the array. Like, do we stay stable in what we're getting our services from you over the last, I don't know, five years? Or is it something that we change every year? Like, I know special ed doesn't change, or maybe now that the S I A Ninth Grade Success has been added, in the last three, five years?
So for Beaverton, it's fairly stable in terms of the array. So the vast, vast majority of the work that we do with Beaverton is in special education. So, you know, you can see the list of services here. I don't want to read them off, right? But occupational therapy, like these kind of high-intensity disabilities, low incidence disability services are a big bread and butter with us. We actually get a very large state grant called a Regional Inclusive Services Grant that funds quite a lot of service across the region in Beaverton for students with disabilities. That is kind of the main bucket. Like, other districts, they'll come in and out of our fiscal services because they'll lose a business manager, can't replace them, and then we do their business services. So those are a little bit more fluid, but Beaverton doesn't like, even though Mike did work at the E S D, he's not an E S D employee anymore, and you have your own business services department. So it does stay fairly stable. The other piece that has shifted, the piece that has shifted the most for Beaverton is our relationship with you around teaching and learning or our instruction department. And that's because as the Student Success Act has come on, you've participated in more instructional services. Like, five years ago, we had about ten people in our instructional services department, maybe fifteen. And now we have about seventy people in our instructional services department. And all of our districts are participating in ways that they never have. I was the curriculum director in Tiger Tuwalton many moons ago. I wouldn't let the E S D into my district to do professional development. I mean, I just wouldn't. And we have just a fantastic, highly skilled professional learning team that is highly sought after, gets amazing marks from district participants. And so that service has just grown, and over the last five years has continued to grow. That's the basic expansion.
Thank you.
Okay. Sunita, then Susan?
Yeah, this is very new for me about what services that you offer. So the question that I have, what type of services do you offer for interventions? Like, for if the kids are not doing well in class, if you want to help the students, what type of things do you offer? And the other question is that you said that we take special ed services. Is there anything else that you see that after COVID, the needs have changed for B S D? What type of services do you offer that might be helpful to us?
Yeah. So I'm sure at your board meetings, you've done some talking about like multi-tiered systems of support, you know, the triangle and the core and the strategic. Well, what we've seen coming out of COVID is a lot more kids in the yellow and the red zones of those. So kids needing more emotional regulation, lots of kindergartners who have never been in anything before, right? They didn't go to the store to learn how to socialize, and then they came into your kindergarten. So we're seeing that across the region. Most specifically, the ways that the E S D is in direct service with your district around those services is we run social, emotional learning schools. And Beaverton, these are schools for kids who are truly unsafe in your school systems. They are high, high needs emotionally, behaviorally. And we have a number of schools that we run and that Beaverton purchases slots in. And our teachers are teaching your kids in a very intensive special education environment. So Levi Anderson Learning Center, which is connected to St. Mary's Home for Boys right here in Beaverton. We have our Cascade Academy, Pacific Academies in Columbia, which is K five middle school and a high school program for kids with tertiary special education needs. And those are the ways that we're most in contact with you around student interventions. The other places are really around professional learning. And so you have, for instance, Ninth Grade Success is about identifying kids, practices that we know work for most kids, and then interventions for kids so that we can make sure they're on track for graduation. We have a very large professional learning network. Your schools are highly involved in that network with us. We have thirty one or thirty two high schools in the region where, like, you know, very large network of professional learning. So that's an example of a way that we're with your district, but not in direct service in that way around struggling learners. Other than the other interventionists, like I talked about, occupational therapists, speech pathologists, kind of add-on on top of specialist services.
Other, oh, Susan, did you have a chance?
Yes, it's a quick question, because I know, and thank you for coming today, Karen. It's good to see you. It's, she was zone one, and I'm zone one. I just want to clarify that for anybody that might be questioning that. So my question is around the E S R funds and what the impact of E S R funds going away will be for E S D.
Well, funny you should ask, being that David just testified about that in the legislature today. So I think, David, you might want to take this one.
Well, thank you, Dan. Actually, my testimony today, the Senate Education Committee held an informational hearing on E S R funds. And the Department of Ed provided testimony. I provided some testimony about how E S R was developed and spent in the region. And then actually, Dr. Suwiriki Smith from Tiger Tuwalton presented testimony on how Tiger Tuwalton specifically was expanding the funds. The E S R funding looks a little bit different at the E S D level. It's obviously, from a scale perspective, much smaller just because of that, the nature of how it comes to us. The E S R funds to the E S D have been very instrumental in supporting infrastructure improvements, particularly for our early childhood services. Again, there's many things the E S D does that are not in this local service plan, even including, Superintendent Goldman mentioned, regional inclusive services. This is a grant program for which we are a grantee from the state to provide those high-cost, low-incidence services. That's not part of the local service plan, but it is services we provide throughout the region. We are also essentially the number one provider, probably in the state, of early childhood services because we're the primary provider for early intervention, early childhood special ed. So sort of birth-to-five services. And we staff up and run several early childhood centers. The Beaverton Early Childhood Center over, off of, how quickly, Hall and the two seventeen area, essentially. We have a facility over there for those birth-to-five special needs students for a service. And so part of our work with E S R was really making those safe learning spaces for kids, right? Making them COVID-safe for a really medically vulnerable population. So that's a big piece of how we spend. But Dan, I don't know if you want to get into that.
The only thing I would add is, E S D, you know, E S Ds are this kind of mid, they're mid-level governance. You know, we're not the State Department, we're not a school district, and we're not, we don't exist in some states. So in the federal law for E S R, you know, American Rescue Act, we weren't contemplated. And so the only funds that we get at the E S D are from the discretion of the governor in her set aside. And so the way that we've gotten funding to support this is through grant contracts. We have gotten very little general, keep your roof open, you know, we have a service center, we house hundreds of employees, we had to do H VAC improvements, very hard to do that with E S R funds. Like, a district, you had the resources to do those things. We had E S R funds in early learning, in E I E C S E contract, special ed contract, in the regional inclusive services contract, long-term care and treatment contract. And so that's the way that we were able to do some improvements. And like David said, it was mostly airflow, P P E. It wasn't at the level where we could really hire significant numbers of staff to bring down class sizes at our middle programs, those types of things.
Ogana?
Thank you so much, Karen, Dan, and David. Good to see you again. It's been a while. Welcome back. My question is around the intervention services. How do you identify students who need the services that you offer? Is that something that you determine on your end, or is that on our end? The reason, I talk specifically for students with disability or students with special needs, how, because some students have some extreme needs that the school district can't necessarily service. And I speak from experience, from my son, and I could not find help for him. I could not even get the district to do a new I E P for him. It was a move of the last resort that I had to pull my son and put him in a special, in a private school. Now, how do you determine which students would benefit from your program? Is that up to you or up to the school district?
Thank you. That is a complex question in terms of like, you know, two major, large systems kind of rubbing up against one another. The district for K twelve students. So I have a different answer for early childhood special education, which are students who live in the Beaverton District, but have not hit your kindergarten. For those students, we work with the district to, well, the district contracts basically with us to do evaluations and find kids, work with doctors' offices, we call it child find, just like you do in the K twelve. We do that at birth-to-five. But in terms of the school district, K twelve, K fourteen, that is the school district's responsibility. So we are at, we are a contractor for you to provide the direct service, but we do not do any of the evaluation work, et cetera, identification of students with disabilities, or placement conversations. Those are all Beaverton School District decisions. Now, we do, as a provider of special education services across the region, our executive director of Special Services works with the directors of Special Services in all the districts, and they have a collaborative. So that's a way that we talk about best practice together. But we are not on the front line in the Beaverton School District with evaluation, eligibility for special ed, or a determination of services. That is a district responsibility.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board? Great. Thank you for the presentation tonight, and we will look forward to seeing this at our next board meeting as a motion to vote on.
Thank you.
Next up, we've got Camilia with some board policy updates. Camilia's going to walk us through the code of board policy changes with many colorings and underlinings and crossouts, et cetera, et cetera.
There we go. Good evening, Superintendent Baldaris, Chair Colette, and the school board. Tonight, I have for you the first reading of five policies. These policies were generated by Oregon School Boards Association edits that the district receives on a quarterly basis, and they were reviewed by the Board Policy Committee. Like Tom said, the colors that you see have special meaning. Anything that is highlighted in yellow and underlined and blue font, that is new required language. So what that means is there was a change to a statute or a regulation at the state level, and we are now updating language in our policy to reflect some of those changes. There is also language in there that is just blue and underlined. A lot of that language is language that comes to us from the sample or model policy from O S B A. And the Board Policy Committee, through our work together, is recommending maybe updating some of our language to reflect the model policy that's coming to us from O S B A. And then any language that's in red and crossed out is language that we are eliminating. Some of it is language that is no longer good law, it's no longer in effect. Some of that language is, we're swapping language choices. And you can kind of see that as you read along, you may see a blue area that's optional that says something very similar to the red strikeout. We're choosing the model policy language to put that forward to you all. Now, I had not planned to go through each and every policy with you unless you would like some summary of that. Otherwise, I am happy to answer questions about the individual policies that we have here for a first read.
Question? No. No, 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 go for it.
My question is, who's on the bond, I mean, the policy committee?
That is a very, yeah.
Myself, Sunita, and Karen. Myself, Sunita, and Karin. And we've, this, this is the product, I believe, of two meetings, we, where we tackled three policies in each meeting. Um, there's some edits that came out of that, and then what you're seeing is, uh, the committee basically recommends it coming forward. Any questions for Camilia about the, the specific policy? Susan?
So my comment would be that, and maybe I missed it somewhere, and, because sometimes I'm fuzzy, so, um, the, it would be good to have that reminder of who was part of the process. I mean, I don't, I mean, I now know it, but it would be like, that's a good, and, and if you had any comments about any of these, or if there, it's, you, there's no comments because Camilia's bringing it to our, to us. Sorry.
Um, so, what happens in the process is, is, is the committee, we receive the policy, and then we go through it with Camilia. There are a number of questions, there's a number of changes, I mean, there's, they're so numerous, Susan, it would be hard to give you a full of-
I guess I'm just wondering, you know, it's kind of new, the process here, we're looking at.
This is-
I mean, I mean, I know we've had policy committees before, it just feels like, maybe, it, it feels, usually, we've had a board member, you know, part of the descriptor, or, you know, it, so I'm just trying to wrap my head around some of this.
So, let me jump in and, and maybe give you kind of a scaffold of, of, of how, how we got here. So, um, the Board Policy Committee can either generate policies that they are working on, or that they want to focus on, and initiate changes to policy based on, uh, the interests of the board and things that you guys want to focus on. Um, but also, we receive a quarterly update from the Oregon School Boards Association. Um, they have a team of folks, uh, policy writers, attorneys, that are constantly getting updates from the state, um, particularly when the legislature's in session, there's a lot of changes that come out of that work, and they are collating those and looking at the book of policy that they advise the districts throughout the state on areas that we need to update to get into compliance. Um, you may have noticed during the COVID timeframe, we weren't bringing forward a lot of policy, because we had a lot of other, a lot of other things we were working on as a school district and a school board. Um, we are now in the process of looking at those quarterly updates that may have been, uh, set aside, put on the back burner while we focus on some other more pressing issues, and we're trying to get our book of policy updated to catch up. Um, the nice thing is, is I believe that our staff is already doing many of these things to be in compliance, because we are keeping on top of that, but this is the, the part where we are going about looking at those policies systematically and updating them. Yeah. And so, myself and the district hired, uh, compliance, uh, officer, who are taking chunks of those policies, reviewing them against the OSBA language, and then bringing those forward to the policy committee, which does have three of your board members audit, and making those recommendations. So, everything you see here in this particular group of policies, these are all, uh, changes that are being recommended, uh, by OSBA based on a statutory change, or like I said, in the, in the blue wording, that is probably wording that's in the current OSBA model policy, and we're just bringing, making some choices to bring our policy into alignment with that, and that will make it simpler to update the policies into the future as different updates come out of OSBA.
Thank you for that exclamation, because that really clarified it, because I'm like, there's a lot of policies coming all at once, and, and now it's clear, I mean, of course we didn't have policies during COVID, because we were working on listening to and dealing with COVID for the last two years, so I appreciate the explanation.
My pleasure, Susan.
One thing I can offer too, Susan, if it's helpful, is we could, um, if there are any major changes that we make to policies, we could like, make a note that this came from the work of the, the policy committee, and it wasn't suggested by OSBA, so you could see what's OSBA's work and what's our work, if that, if that's helpful.
Or if I was trying to wrap my head around certain things.
Okay. Becky?
Um, Tom, I think that'd be a really good suggestion, because I did this, we had a full year that we went and reviewed every single policy, and it makes perfect sense at the time, um, and we were keeping notebooks and notes. Now, all these years later, it, so I think, w- we do things in real time, it makes sense to those people that are sitting there now, but you want something, um, note-wise, that makes sense to future of what were those people thinking in 2023? Why in the world would they, um, so I think, um, the notes that you take in committee and then notes, but, um, yeah, I mean, we could have, we could have every single meeting had just the OSBA updates, or, you know, the ORSs in, to, to come, but I think that makes really good sense, if it's language that we are coming up with, especially if it's brand-new policy from scratch, that we go, the rationale, so that future boards can then go and look at why we did what we did.
Yeah, happy to add that, that other level of, of, I guess transparency and information for other board members. Um, and then I would also say too, if you look at these policies, the majority of the changes are dictated by the ORS, so you'll see our changes, but oftentimes, they're stylistic, or they're smaller, um, but happy to track those, so you guys see those, that, no problem. I think, Karin, I think you-
Yeah, so I think, um, that makes sense to me. Um, the notes that, um, Camilia has put, that describes each one of them, maybe we could add a sentence or something, if there's some, some thinking behind that the board wants to make sure to put down for future boards to know the why of maybe the shifts. Um, I appreciate the way that you've kind of had each one, and then explained the major, um, kind of changes, but, um, for each one, um, we did three in two hours, so we spent a lot of time discussing, so that we could come up with a sentence or two. I don't think it should be a paragraph, but maybe a sentence or two to kind of say, this is, um, something that came up for the board members in the room, and, um, maybe some pinpoints, I think that would be helpful.
Other questions from the board about the policies?
I think, for me, as part of being part of the policy committee, it's been helpful to read each one so carefully and to be able to ask questions, um, and found your, you know, answer, your responses and giving us answers, um, from you and Carrie, really helpful, um, and to my understanding of all the different policies and why, um, we're doing different things. And just one that I think, um, Susan, you would be interested in, is, and many of our students might be interested in, is that there are mental health days for students, and so that's policy, JED, student attendance, um, and it also allows for up to seven days of excuse absences for students who's, um, dependents of the, members of the US Armed Forces, so, I mean, there are pieces here that are, I think our students would be interested in, as well as our community and our families.
Now, this is, um, just coming to us for first reading tonight, so if folks, you know, if you spend more time with them, you have questions, and you have questions for anybody on the committee, happy to answer those at a future board meeting, or, or, you know, whenever, if you email that over, happy to answer that too. So, if, I'm not seeing any other questions, or is everybody good? Okay, great.
So procedurally, these are here for a first read, we will bring them back, um, next month for second read, where they will be in the consent agenda to pass, so definitely, if you have questions in the interim, feel free to, um, communicate those through the policy committee, and we'll get you answers. Thank you.
Thanks, Camilia. Um, next up, we have an item for action at this meeting, and I, did we hear a motion to adopt the boundary adjustment for Finley and Bonney Slope Elementary?
So, I, I'm gonna clarify what I'm reading, to make sure, I guess, basically, I'm saying, um, I move to adopt the boundary adjustment for Bonney Slope-Finley.
I second the motion.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded, um, now we can open up discussion on the measure, um, and do folks have any questions? I know we have staff available, uh, if folks do have questions. I have a question. Um, like, my question is, um, you know, I received, um, some concern from the community about potential overcrowding under this option number two at Bonney Slope, and I wanted to know if you guys had a response to that, uh, concern.
For the record, my name is Stephen Sparks, Executive Administrator for Long Range Planning. Yes, we have, uh, looked at the various, um, comments that have come in concerning, um, both the, um, overcrowding potential and the, um, uh, legacy, uh, comments. With respect to the overcrowding, we're, um, confident that with this move, as, uh, we have identified in the agenda bill, uh, before you this evening, that we will not see overcrowding at Bonney Slope, because the development potential that exists, the remaining, remaining development potential that exists in grid code 130, we do not expect to happen within the next three years of what we assumed for projection. The area, um, does have additional potential, and when we look at the high-growth factor, um, that we've included in the materials, that assumes that that area builds out. There are, um, homes of, uh, enough value that assembling those parcels, taking down those homes, I think are, um, going to put a price point on the resulting developments that are just too high. It will happen at some point in the future, it just, we do not expect it to happen in the next three years, but it's possible, anything is possible, that's the reason why we have, you know, a worst-case, um, growth scenario and an enrollment scenario in our evaluation.
Becky?
So, Mr. Sparks, is this a comparison to when we made the adjustments to Nancy Roiles and Shoals Heights, anticipating what was going to happen, uh, with the Cooper Mountain area, that we were anticipating, so we made those adjustments early on, before the building started, and then once we found out, once those, um, homes were built, they really weren't being sold to people with elementary kids, it was, it was more, uh, secondary kids, and so we did not have as much of the overcrowding than being shifted to Hazel Dale and to the other, is it, is it akin to that same sort of thing, or not?
It, it's not exactly an apples-to-apples comparison, but it is a, um, fair scenario to, um, think about when it comes to, uh, new development, again, if it were, um, with the type of price points, with the expense of doing the types of improvements that would be required on that road, Thompson Road, and, um, you know, the, the cost of assembly, um, of those properties.
And then to just follow up on what, same sort of thing you were saying, we also received, um, some notes from community members about the legacy. Um, do we, do we have those numbers? I, I, I know you always go down to see the children that are, the siblings, and where we cut off, um, I, I believe you gave us those exact numbers last time of-
Right, and I believe, um, we had that in the, um, board report, um, but we do, we do know those numbers. Um, the sibling legacy to the third and fourth graders totals, um, I believe it's 13 or 14, uh, students.
There are 31 current third and fourth grade students who will be eligible for the legacy student option, and there are 14 students currently enrolled in kindergarten through second grade at Bonney Slope Elementary, who are siblings of the students eligible for lega, legacy student option.
Correct, and that would mean there are, um, approximately 30 students who would then go to, um, uh, Finley out of grid code 130, that would not be eligible for the, uh, legacy status.
Other questions from the board? Thank you for the clarification, we appreciate it. And with that, we'll take a vote on the motion. Um, board members, answer with aye, nay, or abstain when I call your name. Uh, Susan Greenberg?
Aye.
Karin Perez?
Aye.
Eric Simpson?
Aye.
Sunita Garg?
Aye.
Ugana Enenaya?
Aye.
Becky Timchuck?
Aye.
Tom Collette is aye, and the motion passes unanimously. Our last, uh, part of the meeting tonight is board communication. Um, board members, any final comments for the night? Karin?
Um, the bond committee, um, Eric and I are on the bond committee, and we met, um, last week, and, um, had a intro to the bond committee with the, all the new members, so that was, um, it was nice to meet everybody and get to know, um, a little bit about each person, and to also have the, um, kind of historical perspective from the current board or bond committee members passing on that knowledge to the new bond committee, and they will, for the next few months, work as a team, um, to kind of onboard the new bond committee members, so I just wanted to share that with everybody. Um, I think that, that was the main thing. I, I, um, have appreciated having those, um, coffee chats, chats that, uh, Dr. Baldairis has had during the day, um, and know that we also had those evening listening sessions for people that are working during the day and can't make those, but, um, it's been great to be hearing from our community, um, and that's a space where we can actually interact with people and have conversations, whereas when you come to the board meetings, um, we listen, but we don't get to interact with people, so just wanted to, um, let people know that those are available and they're happening. I know Shelley puts them out, um, pretty, almost every month, we have something, one or the other, um, that people can participate in. And, um, I think, I also want, I've heard a lot of really positive comments about the classified staff training, um, that were made available in the calendar, and, um, just wanted to name that. And I know that for some of our staff, the calendar changed when their children are not within the Beaverton School District, and, um, will cause some difficulties that first year, and hopefully, I know that other districts are reaching out, even to me, like Lake Oseego was reaching out, saying, how did you guys do that? Because that's what they're moving toward as well, so I think that other districts will be making some of those similar changes, but know that, um, I recognize that, that might be rough for some of our staff that first year, um, while we hear what other districts are doing, so thank you.
Susan?
Uh, two things. One, um, I'm sure Becky, um, is on the same page as me, that OSBA's legislative, um, get-together, uh, with Washington County is, uh, February 4th, I think it's at the ESD, um, at 9:00 AM, it's a breakfast kind of thing, breakfast-y, I don't know what kind of food's gonna be served, but anyway, um, I know that there's a conflict, and I apologize for that piece, um, but hopefully, a good many people can attend that, because obviously, we have to fight for every single dollar that's out there and every, for our kids. Um, and the other thing I wanted to do is, um, appreciate the board, and the, that the fact that I'm part of a board that I have a lot of respect for, and appreciate all the hard work that everybody does, so, thank you.
Becky?
I'd also like to, uh, encourage and for us to get the word out, that there will be a school board election this May, and you can see how much fun we have here at these monthly meetings, and I'm sure there are many people that are watching us right now that are wondering how they too can be a part of this fun that we have every month. So, um, if anybody has any questions, I know any of us would be happy to answer any questions, and also, the Oregon School Board Association offers webinars, uh, that you can watch online on how to run for the school board and, and what the work is, but, uh, it is very important that our community, that we have people that are willing to, um, step up and participate, um, in this, uh, process, so I encourage. And, um, as Susan said, every day now, for the next six months, our one and only job is to make sure that this school district gets the money that we need to thrive and grow, so, uh, any opportunity that we have with our neighbors or anyone else is to share with them what we need- them what we need as a current service level. And lastly, I want to wish an early happy birthday to Director Greenberg, and we hope that you have a very nice birthday on Thursday.
Sunita?
Yeah, thanks for the listening sessions. I was able to attend one of them, and I heard good things from the community members that they were very happy to be there and that their voices were being heard. Also, the multilingual part, I wish more and more people can find out about it, how they can be, they can take part in that. And as far as the board members, I really enjoy being in this board. This is my second year, and I want to thank each and every one of you, because I've learned a lot from everyone here, and it is a very impactful volunteer position that if you have time, then you should consider running for it. So thank you.
Other comments from the board? Okay, then I'll just end with 10.3. That's where we want to get, 10.3. I'm just going to keep saying that. That would be even better. Is that QEM, Mike? QEM?
Yeah.
Absolutely. Long-term, we keep fighting till we get QEM. This year, maybe 10.3, 10 years from now, who knows? Five years from now, if you're more optimistic. Susan, I remember when I was elementary school kid getting on a bus to go advocate for school funding. It's a long-term thing in Oregon. It's a long-term thing. But 10.3, and I hope everybody has a good night. It is always a pleasure to serve with this board. It is an amazing group of people who truly, truly, truly care about kids. And with that?